...to relax and rest up a little bit over the holiday. Um, we're going to, actually, um, is someone on the phone?
He said he was going to call in soon.
Okay, all right, so then when he calls in, we'll go ahead with that.
Yeah, I just, the phone was acting up, so I just called to see if he was talking. There he is.
There he is.
Okay. All right, so, Dwayne?
Somebody's getting it.
Dwayne?
Oh, he's here.
Okay. Um, so can you just let us know why you couldn't be at the meeting physically tonight?
I'm out of town.
Well, it's, we have to ask that. Um, and is there anyone else in the room with you?
I'm in a car driving right now.
Okay. And if it-
If the driver, I'll be home in about an hour.
Okay.
Straight to the meeting.
And if at any point you can't hear us, Dwayne, let us know, um, because in order to participate in votes, you have to be able to hear the full discussion, so let us know if at any point you can't hear us.
Right, I have a way to list a vote right now.
Okay. Sounds like there's a delay, maybe. Yeah. Okay. All right, so, um, I just opened the meeting, Dwayne, and we are going to go forward with announcements. First up, as you, as usual, is our principal's report with Mr. Rob Scully.
So, again, Happy New Year. I'll highlight some of the things on the principal's report. Before I forget, though, I included the merit, the alumni, that I know a lot of you folks like, and I just got permission, so I want to send you a password and username and password for that, because I'm not sure if you were able to access that link. I'll send it out to the board, and then you'll have a username and password, uh, password, and you can, you can look at those. But, just a couple of quick thank yous. Wanted Jen Heward, our special ed coordinator, uh, she is fantastic, and we haven't talked about this too, too much, and I'm going to ask Meg and Jen in the next month or so to come and maybe do a quick presentation. We, uh, applied for and were accepted to a program, the New Hampshire Next Steps Program, that has proven to be both enlightening and helpful and an unbelievable resource. Very, very quickly, it's geared toward, uh, transition programs for students to go from college to, uh, and career. Uh, it's pretty involved. It is another one of the things that we've done, uh, in looking for grants or, or opportunities to enhance our teaching and learning, but I just wanted to say a big thank you to Jen Heward for really, um, uh, getting at the forefront of that, and we'll have more details in the next couple of months. And Maggie Paul, and all the advisories for the sponsored child program during the holidays. Um, with our teaching and learning, just highlighting a couple of things, uh, the Info Center hosted an Hour of Code recently. It was wonderful. I also wanted to note that our students went to, uh, some of the other schools and worked with, uh, some of the younger, um, students with coding. Uh, and in one case, you know, seeing a 11th and 12th grader sitting with a kindergarten student working on some coding was a, was a great sight. This is another extension of the Ethics Forum Leadership Empowering Authentic Progress, the LEAP program. We're two or three years into it, so I just wanted to highlight the Ethics Forum students involved in the LEAP program, designed and facilitated the 30th annual Leadership Workshop at UNH Manchester on December 16th. So, um, I highlight these really quickly because, as I said, um, you know, some of the work we're doing in the STEM area, and also another, uh, example of our students getting authentic experience with a connection to, uh, college, um, part of our, uh, work with the strategic plan. So those are two highlights from teaching and learning. Also want to highlight a couple of visits that we've had, um, special education. On the first, SHS welcomed members of Voice River High School faculties. The visitors arrived to observe the SHS Special Education Department, specifically focused on our service delivery model, co-teaching, transition program, and Sabre Support, and we're going to welcome Merrimack High School, uh, this month for a similar visit. Um, you might remember, each year, uh, I mentioned our, our, kind of almost our sister district in Springdale, Arkansas, they received a large grant a few years ago, uh, in a Race to the Top grant, and they're using their Race to the Top grant to improve their district. And, um, another one of the groups we work with, Center for Secondary School Redesign, connected us, and they have been visiting us for the last, boy, three or four years, so they were all here, um, recently, and I, uh, include an excerpt from the thank you note from Don Saviski from the CSSR, and I thought it was really interesting, um, that the visitors all commented, "I'd like to come to school here." What a great compliment to all the schools that they visited, um, so he can be invited them. Updates, NIASC. Uh, you're going to hear that much more in the next 18 months. We've been working on NIASC since September. Uh, we began kind of officially our NIASC accreditation process today with a visit, um, from our NIASC liaison. Amy McGuigan is our NIASC coordinator. Our steering committee meets regularly and recently worked to finalize each standards committee. Some of you may have received an email or two, or you're going to soon to be on, um, those standards committees. Um, the NIASC accreditation process, if you're not familiar, is a real organized, pretty extensive self-reflection, uh, done every 10 years with five and seven-year checkpoints. Uh, Bill Worley, our NIASC liaison, visited Sohegan today. He gave some training to the steering committee and met with the entire staff. Um, other updates, Emergency Management Incident Command, on December 22nd, E&amp;E Security performed an evaluation of our current camera system. Uh, I think we talked about this last time, I just wanted to give you an update on where we are with that. E&amp;E Systems is developing a plan for full school camera coverage, so we asked what would it look like, uh, for full coverage, and then, we go with the platinum plan, or the gold plan, the silver plan, depending on, uh, our thoughts there. The intended coverage is for the entire campus, inside buildings as well as the grounds. Um, E&amp;E Security, Adam put us in touch with, he's worked with them before, and Officer Smith is awaiting word on when the proposal will be presented. I literally just got an email right before I came up, and, um, the, uh, from Officer Smith forwarded me from the E&amp;E Security, and they'll have a rough outline, I want to say within the next week or two, and then a real detailed one, uh, but we'll keep, uh, after them. They're as anxious to get us the information as we are, uh, um, they're anxious to give it as we are to get it. So, we had somebody come in since we last spoke to perform a assessment of our system.
Is that Rob?
Yeah.
The, um, the, uh, the surveillance system or the security camera system, um, have you, the, the original request was that we get feedback from the stakeholders, understand, and realize it's a complicated thing here, because you don't have a proposal to explain it to them and that kind of thing, but, you know, sort of a chicken and egg kind of situation here. So, are we getting any feedback from the stakeholders that would be involved, including teachers, students, administration, police, whatever?
Yeah, good way to put it, the chicken and egg. So we decided, uh, we decided to go with the-
Chicken.
Chicken, I guess, if, if that's you. So we're going to bring them, uh, instead of saying, "What do you think about cameras?" And then have, "Where? How many? What's the coverage?" So we'd, you know, kind of have a concept, uh, and then, uh, involve the stakeholders, which would be all the folks that you mentioned. It would be, um, council would be as a proposal first, as much as an FYI, we're having this done, what do you think, and, uh, faculty, and, and, uh, we can consider parents as well. Uh, but we thought we'd have a, kind of a little proof of concept prior to, um, asking what you thought, and then have all the questions, well, what would it look like, how many, et cetera? So-
Okay. Well, the, the other side of this thing is, is, um, when I originally proposed this, initiated it, I was hoping that it would see the light of day in this year's budget discussion. And what I'm, you know, I just calibration of this situation now is that we're not going to see it in this year's budgets, in this budget, this year's budget. So, I mean, what if it comes back and everybody says yes?
Yeah, and I guess the best I could do, that is the timing of it. It's not, it's a pretty involved process. As I mentioned, it's been part of our emergency management planning that began, I want to say almost 18 months ago, or, or two years ago. Um, so, you know, I don't know how the, the board feels in general about-
Well, by proposing it in October, which is an October board meeting-
Yeah.
You know, I sense, I hope that there was a way to get it into this year's budget, at least have a discussion around this year's budget, but we've kind of blown through that now.
You know, I don't know what, other than, you know, the-
I'm disappointed in the fact that we have blown through that. Is the last, is it, is there a last effort to get a pricing on this thing, so we could actually put it on a warrant article to see how that flies? Is there a possibility of doing that?
I think you're asking your-
I'm asking, actually, Adam.
Yeah. So, uh, we can, within reason, I can give you a ballpark of what it's going to cost. It's going to be a significant amount, and so pick a number that you're comfortable with and put it out there as the first phase for camera installation, and that could certainly be a warrant article this year with details to follow. The challenge is that, next Wednesday at your, um, public hearing, you have to disclose all, all appropriations that you're intending to bring forward to the deliberative session. So, we're literally at the deadline, um, to make those decisions. So if the board feels comfortable picking a number and adding that number to a warrant article, we can certainly do that, knowing that there will be a plan that's forthcoming.
So, I, I would like to interject, because I've said this a number of times, and as the community council liaison, I want to say it again, community council is the governing body of our school. Unless we want to change that, then this proposal should go through community council first. And I've also said not for them to make the decision, community council is well aware that when something involves, um, money and/or security, that it's a recommendation to the board. But, that is the process that we use, and that's the process that, um, should continue to be used unless we want to change the philosophy of the school, or philosophy of community council being our governing body. So, until enough information can be gathered by the incident command team for Officer Smith to bring a proposal to community council, um, I wouldn't recommend adding an arbitrary amount of money on a warrant article to the budget.
Well, I was hoping that it wouldn't be an arbitrary amount of money. I was hoping that we would have, we had three months from the start of this motion, and basically, we're not, we don't even have a proposal now. I'm just, there's a timing problem there.
I would also like to ascertain how the village school got their cameras granted, you know, the camera, camera grant, they got it paid for, see if there's anything we can do on that, too.
They, I, excuse me, I believe that they got their grant through the State Department of Homeland Security. They had, um, matching grants for, um, this type of thing. Uh, I'm not sure what's available right now, but, um, we usually would not start that process until we kind of had a shovel-ready project, meaning a proposal ready to go, that we would then apply for a grant at that time.
Any other questions? Dave?
Rob, you're really good at run-on sentence to the next topic, so I didn't get a chance to answer this question.
Yeah.
But, uh, when you were talking about visitations to other, by other schools to us-
Yes.
What about us to other schools, and what might we have learned from them? I'd like to hear that on a regular basis, if you do have that.
Do you have schools in mind, Dave, or?
No. I mean, I mean, our, our staff, I'm assuming, goes out to learn things in other schools in other ways, and, you know, in the process of doing that, much like people come to us, you know, whenever we do it, we should ask for learnings from them.
Yeah, that's a point. I, I remember when we, you know, I tripped to Syracuse and-
Sure.
That type of chore. Run-on?
Well, you have run-on topics.
Okay.
You jump from one topic to the next with no pause.
Well, Steve gave me a timeframe. Um, so, just last updates, uh, on PACE, uh, our district lead, uh, meeting occurred, Christine and Kathy Friday, December 2nd. Uh, PACE District Leaders met to receive updates on the PACE work in the arts and career technology, et cetera, and review current status of task development in life sciences. So basically, what that means is, our district has, uh, lead folks, uh, who go up, and they're a part of the organization for the statewide work. I also mentioned that previous, uh, meetings that, uh, we're very proud that many of our teachers, six of the seven positions, are Sohegan teachers and PACE lead teachers. Uh, and so they recently received communication outlining their roles and benefits of the position. Uh, basically, I just include this to reinforce the capacity that we're building in our, uh, our staff to be experts in, uh, competency-based education and performance assessments. And then the data collection protocol, again, another update, it's a lot of stuff to wade through, but, um, uh, our work with PACE is so, um, exciting and so important, I'm just trying to keep you apprised, if you get a chance to look at the data collection protocol. I gave you the presentation. Basically, it's now that we're using this as our performance assessment, how we're going to collect all that data, and how we're going to use it to improve student awareness. That's the last, a couple of updates. College application process, I thought this might be interested, uh, interesting. Student services is sent out either electronically or via, uh, USPS. 967 packets of application material, so our seniors are, it's like, almost 1,000 packets of applications, uh, up, uh, from the last two years. Our extracurricular involvement, I think I gave a fall, I just wanted to give the one-
Rob, how many's-
Oh.
Rob?
Yes.
How many seniors are actually applying to colleges?
Oh, you know what? Let me check on that, and I'll follow up relative to, you know, the senior class number, about how many actually have applied. I'll check on that, Dwayne. Um, extracurricular involvement, excuse me, 657 students involved in athletics clubs activities, an increase from 588. About 79% of our student body evolved in extracurricular. And then the recognitions, the alumni page, which is very, very enjoyable. Our, our alum have received awards as well in their colleges, so I'll send you that username and password. Um, specifically, student body president, Bobby Graham turns over a role to his twin sister Laura. You may have seen that, I included that link, thought that was a neat little article. Um, hometown hero, Madeline Hunt, uh, leads a cross-country team to success. She was recognized by WMUR. And, just to reemphasize, the sponsored child program, if you're here right before we go away for holiday break, it's quite a scene. Sohegan sponsored 25 children from the Nashua Soup Kitchen and Shelter. There are seven wonderful bikes, a top-notch skateboard, two sets of roller blades, et cetera. Um, that's usually based on the list students send in their wish list. Uh, many advisories and CFGs contribute to the family basket, provided to families in our local community. And the soup kitchen coordinators, uh, made a special call to let us know that they were very grateful for Jacob Hoffmanberger and his mom, Carol, who were at the soup kitchen, maybe even Christmas Eve, helping to sort the gifts, so, just wanted to recognize their efforts.
Alsa?
Yes.
All right. Um, you know I was going to suggest, Rob, might be a good idea, because there's always, and I say this every month, but there's always so much great information in the principal's reports, and I know Steve gives you a time limit, so, I wonder if we could have, um, some highlights, like in bullet form, on, on the PowerPoint as part of our packet?
Okay.
So that way, you know, you don't have to feel like you're talking a mile a minute going through them all, and, and people can actually really see everything, you know, going on. I think that would be a good idea.
All right.
Um, all right, any questions for Rob? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to our next agenda item, which is the community council report, and I know Elizabeth is here, and, um, Emery, you're going, you're coming up with Liz? Okay. Hello. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Although I've seen you since the new year, but-
So, uh, in the last month at council, we've actually only had two meetings, uh, due to the weather. They've been continuously being pushed off, so, um, we haven't done a lot, but, in the time that we've had, we have discussed a proposal brought up by Rick Katzenberg, and, um, the proposal was, I mentioned it before, but it was to change the Student Activities Committee's liaison position to be elected in the spring, as to allow for more time for fall activities to be planned during the summer. And, um, at the moment, we are in the midst of discussing a plethora of amendments, so, um, once those amendments have been gone through, I will continue to give more updates. Um, so we also have Emery here, and he is to, um, discuss the gender-neutral bathrooms proposal, and he has copies of the proposal, as well as proposed bathrooms to be changed, as well as, um, number estimates.
If you guys remember, community council voted, um, to bring the recommendation to the board to establish some gender-neutral bathrooms in the buildings.
I think John's here, has, he provided any, uh-
Yeah, and I think John is, uh, is that in the, are John's numbers in the packet, Emery and Liz?
In that, no, that's just the, um-
Okay.
-proposal itself, in case people wanted to look at it.
Okay. We can have John come up after and talk about cost, or whatever you guys think is appropriate.
Okay.
Okay, this is just the proposal, okay.
Yeah.
Um, John did look into cost for us, um, and, the cost, though, does not really cover just the proposal. The proposal is just to make gender-neutral bathrooms, um, and the thought was it was just going to be signage that would need to be changed, but there, a lot of other issues came up during our discussions, that in general, the bathrooms have, um, issues. Rick actually took a group through over the summer, when there was not a popular, student population in the school, and, and looked at what needed to be done in order for our bathrooms to be secure and private in general. And based on that, and on feedback from community council, John came up with some, um, proposed numbers, and, John, do you want to, actually, probably now would be a good time, if you want to come up and just, um, you know, talk to the board about that. I wasn't sure if you were going to have it on a PowerPoint or a few-
I don't have any.
Okay. We could probably make copies.
Yeah.
Okay. I wonder, uh-
So, talking on the, the changes that we want to do for gender-neutral bathrooms, not the repairs in general, correct?
Right. I think we'll start there, and then the repairs in general.
Okay. The, um, there's three bathrooms in question, and the two in the music wing. The, um, the second floor boys' room at the annex currently has two urinals and, and two toilet stalls in it. The, um, we, the stalls that are there are older, stiler, like, cheaper, I would say, metal ones that don't give a lot of privacy, and then we would have to add two more stalls around the urinals. I looked at replacing the urinals with toilets, but the plumbing isn't right for it, and it would be extremely costly to do that. But, um, so we would put four new stalls, two around the urinals, two around the toilets. And then, in this building, on, um, this wing, on the first floor, um, we were converting the girls' room. That one's pretty simple. It would be just new stall doors that provide better secure, better privacy, and they actually latch and have coat hooks and everything that they should. And then the, the other wing over this way, was converting the boys' room. That's probably the, the most difficult to figure out exactly what to do. There's, there's one toilet stall and two urinals. The urinals are pretty close together. If we put stalls around the urinals, it, um, it leaves very tight, skinny stalls, and there's not a lot of room for door swing there, so I came up with two options for that one. One of them is to remove the urinal on the left and put a stall around that urinal, or take the stall material, the, the plastic, um, partitions, and, and make kind of like one big stall, that it's not totally private with a door, but you're, you're blocked from view unless someone's really going over there to take a peek. Um, so, and then the, the last item is, the, the two bathrooms in the, um, in the music wing, changing the locks so they don't need keys, and, um, and then anybody can use right now, I guess, they're, they're frequently locked, and you have to go to Carl to find the key, is what I was told the other day. And, um, and then another question I was asked, if we take one of the urinals out in the bathroom over here, sorry, I jumped back and forth, the, um, what will the plumbing look like? There'll be a, a small pipe that stubs out the wall, maybe an inch, maybe two inches, depending on how it lies, and then on the bottom where the plumbing is for the urinal, there'd be probably just a metal plate that got painted over, and it'll blend into the scenery like anything that happens, like that. Um, but that's basically it. The hardware would be the vandal-resistant, um, hardware on all the partitions or stalls, and a lot more privacy than we currently have, and, um, so that would be the whole proposal. About $7,400 for all that, and I know it sounds expensive, but, um, they do not give toilet partitions away, believe it or not. They-
And that, and that's just to-
Question?
Yes, sir.
Will we still be compliant with, uh, individuals that have, uh, physical disabilities?
Yes, we wouldn't be changing anything in any bathrooms that would restrict access. So the stalls that are there would stay the same size. Um, the question is if we're not compliant, does it make us compliant? No. But, the, um, we're not changing anything as far as, as far as access.
And John, that, so that cost, um, that's just for making accommodations for gender-neutral bathrooms? That doesn't include updating the bathrooms, so that-
Correct.
You know, there's the existing partitions, all their privacy and locks and all of that?
Right.
Okay.
That is, that is just to make the bathrooms more private, more secure for gender-neutral, gender-neutral bathroom.
And, do you, and then you have the cost, too, is what it would be to change the current bathrooms, just as they are, to be more private and lock and-
I forgot that proposal, but I can take it out of my head. The, um, the, that was-
We won't hold you exactly to it, but just as an idea.
That was only this building, and, and it's, it sounds like a lot smaller number after dealing with that other one, because in this building, most of the stalls have, um, cement blocks for partitions, and it's only doors. So it'd be basically doing just this building. It did not include the locker rooms, and, um, I think the number was around 14,000. And, that would change if we did, that would cover the, the gender-neutral bathroom stuff in this building, but it does, that did not include anything at the annex, so we're looking at that number plus the $4,000 at the annex to do that.
That's for just privacy? That's not for gender-neutral?
That's privacy, but it would, it would kill both hurts.
Okay. Another 4,000, you said?
Yes, for the, for the annex.
Okay. Pete?
What is the point of this discussion tonight? Are we supposed to be voting on this, or doing something with this?
Um, well, actually, the hope, I think, from community council was to make a recommendation to the board, and when the board was ready to vote on it, yes. And it doesn't have to be tonight.
What happened to the public hearing that was supposed to happen with this? That there was supposed to be an information night or something with the public to get community input on this? We talked about that last time.
Yeah.
Well, then-
That was, that was for a policy, transitive policy.
No, that was not for the policy. It was when we talked about-
Yeah, we did talk about it last time. No, I'm sorry. We did talk about-
When I brought up the topic of the bathrooms, it, there, when I was at, you know, that one meeting, there are people that would like to provide input to this. There are people that would be very upset if, in this current environment, we add money to the budget for this. So, what, if there was going to be a cost involved, we said there was going to be something for the public, for them to provide input to this.
Was that the last meeting, last month's meeting?
I, I don't remember which one it was. It was-
I'm asking because I wasn't here last month, that's why.
Yeah, I don't think it was last month.
No, it was, it was, you were here.
Emery?
So, to the extent of my knowledge, because we have been, like, slightly planning some sort of thing like that, because that's been talked about since-
because that's been talked about since we brought this up last year. So, as far as I know, um, we were going to combine that with the policy because that was the last I heard about it. So, we were going to have some sort of thing similar to what I did with just the students where we had them come in for a forum, we talked about it, and then they had like a question and answer thing. We were going to do something like that and combine it with the policy, but I don't have, that was just my impression.
Okay. And also, um, Peter Warburton just found out that, um, we do have an attorney who has some knowledge of this and knowledge of other policies and other school buildings and maybe how those policies might be potentially changing soon, um, just, you know, given the political climate. So, it might make sense then to wait, you know, we've got the cost now and John can give us the cost for the changes, a total cost for the changes aside from the gender neutral. But we've got, um, basically the costs and we have the decision from community council and we'll have more information, January seventeenth, you said, Peter? Was when, um, this attorney was going to potentially come and speak to administration and whoever else might want to, might want to be involved. So, it sounds like it might make sense then to wait until we have this public forum and get more information then to vote. But does anybody have any questions in the meantime about the proposal itself or anything else that Emory or Elizabeth could answer?
I'm, I'm not sure if, uh, I heard Peter's question. So, I'll ask, I thought there was supposed to be some sort of a, a public forum, some kind of public discussion on this matter. Are you telling me we're not going to do that now?
No, we're, what we're saying is it is going to happen. And Emory just refreshed our memory and said that it was supposed to be combined with the policy itself also. So, I think that, um, I'm not sure who would be the right one to organize that forum. Probably the administration, I'm thinking, SAU administration.
So, if I could, I just want to go back to Pete's point. So, when I said something about the policy, thank you, I'm for, you know, getting my memory back on track. The policy committee, uh, when we started to talk about this whole policy about transgender and gender fluid, we, most, some, some towns in New Hampshire, when they do the policy, when they have, they take public input and we were, we would be expected to do that. I think I had mentioned that about the policy. So, that's why I jumped and said, oh, you mean the policy. So, it's really around the policy and what the community council has come up with. The other part is that I want people to be aware, when Mary Lou said something about new, you know, the new information from our legal team, is that, um, the world has changed in the last few months, as you all know. So, we have a lot going on with our government, um, in the, in respect to the policy that we're looking at or to the situation that we're talking about. You may recall that President Obama, under executive order, um, put in place so that districts and schools and communities could support, uh, people that were, uh, changing, students that were transgender and gender fluid as we go along. It's also understood that, and I'm not trying to say, you know, this president against that president, but, so under his executive order, that's continuing. Uh, our new president, President-elect Trump, has said that he would probably, um, say no to those kinds of things and, you know, cut those out for sure. I want you to know that, um, we have been dealing with this kind of situation. Uh, and our role, my role as superintendent is, we talk about engage, challenge and support all learners. My role mostly is to support all learners in our buildings. And to support them, they have to be happy and safe and want to learn and want to be here. So, having said that, um, I've set up a time where our attorney, Dean Egger, will be coming to South Eagan High School on January seventeenth at nine thirty in the morning to talk about what districts, what schools are doing, what the federal law looks like, what the repeal possibly of President Obama's executive order might look like. I'm inviting board members, public, students. Uh, I think there's some information that he can share, um, that I think will be enlightening to you. It's, and I want to say that because not only is he our school attorney, very learned man and, and really leads the way in the state of New Hampshire regarding this, this, um, situation that we're dealing with. And was the lead architect of the bullying law that we have in New Hampshire. Kind of a gifted and talented guy. So, I offer that to you. I'm hoping we can get a number of community council students and others that will be there. It'll be an opportunity for board members to ask questions, legal and otherwise. But it really would be, I hope, a kind of a refreshing of the ideas and concepts and things and that we can just talk together about where do we go from here in relation to what we're dealing with. So, I wanted to make sure that that was out there. So, that's, that will be at nine thirty on the seventeenth. Please let me know if you are planning to attend and those people at home are welcome to come, but let me know. I also would think that we would need a public forum, especially in this issue because I think it's so important to get it right and have contact and information about that. A second public forum, and I'll say it tonight, after Dean Egger's presentation, not the same day, but shortly thereafter, I would think it would be important for our citizens to be able to come and talk and hear and, um, move forward. So, I will be setting that up as well, probably a week or two after Dean talks and we have time to think about his conversation. I hope that helps.
Dave?
So, what, what is, I guess...
Question?
Uh, Dave, Dave is asking a question right now?
Sorry, Dwayne.
Okay.
What, what is the, what is the timeline on this? I don't have a picture in my head about when we're going to try to get something passed and when we're going to appropriate the money to do this or vote it in or whatever. I don't even know how much it is, John. I didn't do the rattle calc, calculation in my head. But, uh, does somebody have a picture of this timeline? Do you, I mean, you know, we're going to do this forum with this attorney.
Yep.
Then there's going to be the public forum that Peter mentioned. And I don't know, somebody's going to have to come up with some money. It passed the budget period by then. So, I don't, what's, what, how's this going to work?
I think that's going to be a board discussion after the public forum, after the presentation on the seventeenth and after the public forum, then I think the board decides how to move forward. It won't necessarily be in next year's budget.
Okay.
However, you know, I think that the changes that came up out of this proposal, the fact that there does seem to be a lack of privacy in some of the bathrooms and locks missing, that is something that we can discuss tonight and vote on if we wanted to. Because that is something that we could put into the proposal, um, in, I'm sorry, into the budget if we felt it was, you know, important enough too. So, I do want to see, you know, how the board feels about that. Um, and we can, I mean, now is a good a time as any to discuss it, I guess, because as, um, Adam said, we can't put anything, money in the budget after a public hearing. So, if there are any thoughts on that and we can also push it off, if you guys want to kind of think about it for a while and we can go back to it under action items at the end of the meeting, we can do that. Any thoughts?
I think it probably wouldn't be worth investing anything until you resolve what you're going to do with every, you know, for the overall plan. Put in a little fix now, you may fix something that's going to come out because you're renovating it later on if you go forward.
There's really nothing in this building that would, that would have to change. Fixing the, the, um, all the, the partitions that are in rough shape now, they would be replaced with more modern, better privacy, vandal resistant stuff anyway.
And they're all going to stay as...
Everything would stay the same and we may have to add more if we decide to do something around there. So, it's more of a fix for this building for the, for the bed. It doesn't, it does not address the annex and, and the bathroom over there that we wanted to convert.
Yeah, anything that would be changed now would not have to be, you know, rechanged, I guess, because the changes for the new gender neutral bathrooms, if we go that direction, were more surrounding the urinals. And so, updating the partitions for privacy and security, yeah, would not need to be changed later on down the road.
So, John, what's the rough justice number?
For...
For...
It's about, I think this building was, I just started looking up the email last night.
Now, we're talking about twenty grand or...
Four, it's about fourteen to do this building.
Okay, and the annex?
And the annex, I never priced that one because those stalls were in better shape. And, but on average, a, a regular stall, the ones at this building are a little different. You figure about a thousand dollars a stall is where it comes out.
You're saying four st...
There's four stalls at the, at the annex.
So, eighteen hundred, eighteen thousand dollars roughly?
Eighteen thousand.
Roughly, alright.
You could do everything except for three bathrooms at the annex that would not be touched.
Well, actually, does the eighteen thousand include the bathroom annex? Did you said fourteen thousand for this building?
Fourteen, he just added the other four, so I went...
Right.
Oh, okay, fourteen thousand for this building, but he's saying the annex ones are in better shape. So, it would be fourteen thousand, was my understanding, Kim?
Are there any economies by doing them all together? Or is there really no economies to, to be had?
No, not really.
Okay, so you can, there's part A and a part B, there's, there's no equal C, it's just A and B.
Right. Right, if you want to throw half that number out there, we could do half of them. About where it's going to land.
And is any of that money, so, I'm assuming that this didn't just happen this last couple of months, that there's been a deteriorating effect over time? And is any of that money, um, in the part of our, um, buildings and grounds budget number currently?
No, we, we've just been taking it up for repairs and we're almost at the point where we drilled so many holes in these things trying to fix them and, and putting angle iron on the walls and they keep finding ways to, to break it. It's, it's time for, as serious as I could do something.
I'm just a little worried then that we kind of, I'm not pointing fingers at anybody here or anybody, just seems like we're a little short sighted in our estimates of, of timing rather, um, regarding these types of fixes.
Right, the, in, in the budget this year, we put, um, a, a number in, and I'm not sure where it stands now, so I apologize, for, um, repairs to the building in general. And that was some of it, but it wasn't a full replace, it was to put, you know, a couple thousand dollars to, to fix up the stuff we had. But it wasn't a, a full replacement. It was to keep the stuff going.
Well, and we asked each department to keep the budget, you know, zero, so...
Yeah, I, I understand.
And the other thing is that really this came, um, to the forefront because of the discussions in community council, you know, about the conditions of the bathroom in general, aside from, you know, gender neutral, so.
That's what I mean, it's like, you know, if these were deteriorating to the effect that they seem to be deteriorating, then we should have somewhere we, as a, well, inclusive...
You know, there's some that are definitely worse than others, so.
Yeah. Sure. But, you know, there should have been some kind of a, a replacement budget, so to speak, right, to, to start replacing those items, um, that are required to get them snubbed. So, I'm just concerned.
Well, Adam, I think two months ago brought up the fact that he's going to, after the budget, um, season process is done, going to be looking SAU-wide at facilities plans for each of the buildings. So, so I agree, we, we need a facilities plan. And this probably would have been in it if we had one. But, um, again, it just came up sooner because of, of these discussions. Also, part of it is just the partitions that were used twenty-five years ago when the buildings were built. You know, they're just not what we would use today, so. So, would, does anybody have any thoughts? I mean, fourteen thousand dollars it would be to update, you know, and vandal proof is another great thing to have these, you know, these partitions be, aside from the security and privacy. Dave?
I, I, I have an idea, I don't know if this is going to work, but it's, um, it sounds like these costs are more or less maintenance costs. I mean, it could be described as maintenance cost because they got to be fixed, is what you're saying, John.
Right. We, we had planned on doing some repairs.
Yeah.
We didn't plan on doing a complete replacement in the budget.
So, um, in your maintenance budget, I don't know what the line item number is, but, uh, there is a line item number in there. Is it subs, is it, is it, is it bigger than a hundred thousand dollars?
No, it's, it's smaller than twenty.
Okay, so this wouldn't fit in there really?
No.
Bad idea then.
The other thing that was, yeah, good idea, that didn't work, yeah. The other thing that was brought up at community council too is that it's not just the students, although they're our first priority, but we also, as far as, you know, privacy and, and locking and all of that, you know, we have plays here, we have sporting events here, you know, all kinds of public events also. So, something to be considered. I don't know if, Steve?
So, um, I, I think, so I think what I heard, sort of to, to blend Kim's comments and John's comments, we asked the administration team to come with as low a budget as possible. So, the most critical repairs are budgeted for. Then when you shine a spotlight on one little spot, one little item, it becomes apparent that you could do a lot. So, we're feeling this, um, divergence between fix the most critical stuff so we keep going and gee, we got this larger problem, we could spend a lot of money to fix because we pay a lot of attention to it right now. So, I don't think that, I don't think that they, the administration has done a poor job of, of budgeting, which I, I think I heard, um, a hint of in Kim's comments.
Quite used those words by then?
You did not use those words, but that's what I heard.
Okay.
I, I, you suggested they could have done better.
Yeah.
And, and I think they did what we told them to do, okay? So, I'll, I'll disagree with you in that way. I, I don't, I personally don't want, just at this point in the game, say, well, we don't know, so let's throw some more money in the budget. As, again, Kim, I love quoting Kim. The budget's too high, we shouldn't add more to it at this point in, in the budget development process. And I, so I would believe in that as well. There are other ways to fix this. Dave's idea, um, I also had thought of. We have the expendable trust and the, the expending for this kind of expense out of that is legitimate, allowed expense. So, that's an option, and we can reach into that. At any moment we wish, have to go through a lot of paperwork, um, and meetings. But it, there's no obstacle to doing that if we put our will to it. There's also, depending on what Adam tells us much later in the agenda tonight, the possibility that, that some of the budget lines will have freed up and there'll be some unexpended funds later in the year. And we could apply some of them by budget transfer to this problem. Or not, we'll find out later tonight, hopefully before eleven. So, I, I, I'm, I would say let us continue with the meetings and the discussions, but not budget money right now. And truly not decide tonight to spend money.
Is everybody okay with that?
I agree.
I, I had one other, uh, question though.
What's that?
Okay, well, question. Was there any discussion, I believe there was a discussion early on that, uh, from the, there would be money allocated from the student activity fund to contribute for this, uh, for this, uh, upgrade as well. I didn't hear that mentioned tonight.
I've never heard that. Oh, Adam?
Well, there, there was a question about where the, the funds for parking permits, how, where they went. And there was an assumption at one point that the funds for parking permits went to the student activities funds. That's halfway correct, but more incorrect. They stop off at the student activities funds on their way to the general fund. So, they, they are deposited in the student activities fund, but then they're transferred, uh, to the general fund. So, I think that was the end of that discussion about student activities funds contributing towards this project.
Um, I think I know what you're...
Yeah, that, I believe was, uh, that was two meetings ago.
Correct.
Elizabeth?
Daddy, I think I know what you're referring to. At, there was a point during, uh, the proposal that any signage or any necessary expenditures would be paid for by the GSA. And at this point, that hasn't been a discussion because we're more talking about the necessary basic repairs to the bathrooms as they are. So, that will come in later, I'm assuming.
Okay. Any other questions for John or Emory or Elizabeth? All right, thank you, guys.
I, I do, I'm sorry, a question.
Oh, oh, Steve?
So, Emory passed out the community council proposal, which I guess was approved. And all it says is designate or install an appropriate amount.
Right.
So, now John has, has made a recommendation that is what I guess what you think is the appropriate amount.
I know it's with, um, Emory and Mary Lou and I forget her name.
I met with Emery and Mary Lou, I forgot her name.
Elizabeth.
Elizabeth, I knew that, and we talked about the poll and what was gonna work best, and we came to an agreement.
So, there's some agreement from community council representatives that this is an appropriate response to the motion by community council.
Emery?
So, we had to put the wording "an appropriate amount" in, because as we were deciding in council, we couldn't say officially, oh, we want these specific amount in this specific area, because that, it has to be a recommendation to all of you, and then John has to give his recommendation, so we had to make it as vague as possible. The recommendations that we have currently are ones that we had in the beginning, which were originally in the proposal, and there was an amendment made to remove them for the purpose of making sure that we weren't, like, trying to enforce things that we didn't have control over, if that makes sense.
I just wanted to say that this is progressing with consensus and agreement, and what we heard tonight is not gonna drive community council crazy, because it's not what they expected at all, okay?
And that also isn't to say that the ones that we mentioned today are like dead, set in stone, can't be changed, these are just original recommendations that we thought would work for various reasons, so.
And Emery, is there anything else you wanna say about the decision on the proposal, the proposal itself, or do you wanna save that for when maybe there's a public forum?
I'm leaning towards that, I don't know, a lot of what I have to say, I said the last meeting, the only thing I might touch on is, we did a school-wide vote, that came out in favor, I do have the statistics here, if we wanna look through them, but I don't know if we wanna do that now, or at the public forum, or another meeting, so.
Why don't we wait till the public forum, although if any board members have any questions or want them, email to them, I can let you know. Oh, yeah. But, yeah, and also, the board members do get community council minutes, and I think it was discussed during the minutes, but we can certainly elaborate if.
I think it's on the council.
Drive.
Drive, they're on the council Google Drive, as well as different comments, trending comments from each class.
Okay, I didn't know that was on the Google Drive, so good to know, okay.
Yeah, and then if anyone has any questions to be on this, you can email me, I think some of you have my email, if not, I can give it to you, 'cause I have, like, those, and I have other things, and like references and sources, so.
Yeah, that's great, and I've got your email, too, if anybody wants to email you also, so, and thank you, John, for putting this all together in a short amount of time, also, that was helpful, we'll probably be calling on you again.
We will.
Stick around all night, John.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thanks, John.
Rec, yeah, do you wanna come up? Yes, come up.
One is a comment, and one is a question, the comment is more or less to verify what Mary Lou said, which is, some of our most, least private and most difficult facilities are right where visitors to the school visit, they're near the gym, they're near the theater, there are doors that don't lock, don't close correctly, and are most problematic, so I just wanted to reinforce that comment. My question is, what is the board prepared to answer when they get questions on the eleven regarding this subject, which precedes the discussion with Peter's associate on the seventeen? How are we gonna handle that if it comes out? And obviously, that's not a question I need answered, but I think you need to have some consideration about.
Do you mean the gender neutral bathrooms?
Yes.
Okay.
Or even the repairs and the budget item that goes with the facilities, generally speaking.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rec. Actually, and John, that, I did have a question, I'm sorry to call you back up again, but I did, Steve's comments kind of made me think, you know, that we have a budget, we ask, you know, for the lowest possible, you know, zero or less, so you weren't putting extras in, but without naming them, aside from this, which to me, you know, is important to the board for safety and security reasons for our students, but are there other things that you didn't put in the budget that would be just as important or more important, in your opinion, for facilities?
Well, that's a loaded question.
And, you know, and if you're not prepared, because I'm kind of putting you on the spot there, so if you're not prepared, then we can, you know, you can email us even, which is totally allowed, to email board members with an answer, so, so, yeah, if you wanna think about that, because I guess that just goes to Steve's point, that if we're gonna put something in the budget, we asked all the departments to come in very low, and if we're gonna end up throwing more money in the budget, it has to be for a good reason, so that's just kinda why I asked.
Yeah, I think we'd be better off to, I mean.
Okay, email?
Not to fuck that up the top of my head.
Yeah, that'd be great, sorry to put you on the spot.
That's okay, I don't mind.
Steve?
So, I think you fairly asked that question, every person, every administrator who contributed to the budget has, you would cover this very long list of things that would make the school better, and we start cherry picking one area over another, or one, one set of things over another, each of us as a board member might have a set of five things that we thought were important, and it's just gonna add to the, I, I.
Okay.
It's not, it's probably not helpful to have that discussion now, it's more helpful to have the discussion March fifteenth, settings of priorities for the next budget.
Thank you, John. Elizabeth?
Just a question to the board, the amount discussed for the necessary repairs for the bathroom, regardless of the gender neutral status, could those go at the deliberative, could they be put in as a warrant article?
No, however, the amount could be added to the operating budget at the deliberative session, and the only way it could, there's two ways that a warrant article comes to be, one is that the board places a warrant article on the warrant, the second is that a citizen submits a petition to the school district clerk in the window required.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Yeah.
The window closes.
Jeannie, did you have a comment, too? Yes, yes.
I have been participating on community council, probably for fifteen years, and still going strong, and so I was a part of this conversation, I just wanna make sure, I know Emery mentioned that she had done a lot of education pieces within the school and a survey as well, and just wanna mention that the, there was a strong support for the gender neutral bathrooms, and I think Emery was very, and those working with him were especially good at educating the folks within this building about this issue, because there were lots of people who were misinformed and really didn't understand what was involved. So, I would like to also support the idea of a public forum, because I think it will go a long way in helping people understand just the importance of this, and that it, we don't need to have, you know, a president say that it's okay or not okay to do this, that we should feel confident as a school about supporting our students, making sure we have safe facilities for them, that we should do this no matter what, so those are my two cents. Regarding funding this, beyond the gender neutral piece, we do need to repair our bathrooms, they're in bad shape, and I do think that the building maintenance fund would be the answer, so I strongly recommend that you look in that direction. And finally, a second piece, because you asked the question about other items that needed to be taken care of, my opinion, coming into the building fairly often, is that it's looking pretty shabby. I know that we're short of custodians, and that could be a piece of it, we have a lot of cracked tiles, both on the steps and in the floors, I assume that's been added to the budget, but we do need to really take a look at our building, it's in bad shape, so if it means adding more employees, then maybe that's the way to go, but I do think that it's taken a toll.
Thank you. All right, you guys also.
Just to reiterate Jeannie's points, I have the numbers from the school-wide vote that we had, and the student body voted, there was fifty-four percent in favor, forty-six against the proposal, but we had a very large turnout of sixty-nine percent of the student body voting, which is very impressive, showed that they were actively involved, and that the school-wide vote that was put forth in a motion in May, people took it very seriously, and I'm very appreciative of that. We had fifty-six staff vote, so that did, they all voted in favor, so that did skew the results a little bit, but the end result was fifty-eight percent in favor, forty-two against, with six hundred twenty-seven people voting. So, it is a large portion of our school population, and I think that just showing that the school was very much involved in this process, and that they voiced their opinions, is something to be proud of, so.
I think so, too, I think they say twenty-five percent is statistically significant, so sixty-something is great. All right, thank you, anything else to add? All right, thank you. All right, so committee reports, PPC, we're gonna discuss in non-public, any other committee reports, I know we've got policies under further action item, any athletics updates? No? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to, well, we kind of already had public comment, but if there's any other public wishing to comment, you're under PTSA report, too, you know?
Oh.
Is that what you were gonna do?
I can wait, no, I forgot I was gonna do that tonight, but no, I can wait, either whenever, it was a PTSA announcement.
Yep, yeah, I have you under PTSA update, too, so.
Okay, great.
But if you have to leave, let me know.
No, it's fine.
Okay, all right, so consent agenda, and before anybody pulls anything, I just wanna make sure everybody got my email with the retirement request, because they are in the consent agenda, so when we approve that, we'll be approving the retirement request as well. And does anybody wanna pull anything, Steve?
December thirteenth, yes.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, so, wanna give us your changes?
Sure, there's, I made a motion on line twenty-nine. Or Kim made a motion, or Kim, I made the motion, Kim seconded it, I'm sure.
Okay, we'll make that change, too, then.
Yeah, sorry, I got so caught up in the motion, I didn't read the part about who made it, I'm sure I made the motion, and it was to move the paving to a warrant article, not to remove the paving warrant article, so.
Right, and Kim, so Steve?
And Kim seconded it, I'm pretty sure Kim seconded it.
Okay.
Get a get on that minute take.
Did you get that today? And by the way, I have been very remiss.
She wasn't, he wasn't.
No, 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 but I mean, did you get it right now?
We're very happy that you're back.
Yes, I was just, I was just gonna say, I was very remiss in not welcoming you back at the beginning of the meeting and congratulating you and your family, but we're so glad to have you back, and nice to see you, so, given that, Danae, did you, did you hear what Steve's?
I've given her a copy.
A copy of it, okay.
And she has rewritten my eligible handwriting already, so she can.
Okay, all right, any other changes, Steve?
I know, now I'm happy.
All right, so anyone wanna make a motion with the amended changes? Kim? And Pete seconds, okay, all in favor of passing the consent agenda, unanimous? Dwayne, we all, aye, 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 aye? Can you say?
Aye.
Okay, all right, so it's unanimous, great, so presentations, brings us to our FY18, third draft of our, our budget, our budget hearing.
Motion to accept this.
No, that, we accepted them in the consent agenda, that's why I wanted to make sure everybody read them, the retirement requests, yeah. All right, so, Adam?
Yes, ma'am.
The FY18 budget hearing preparations, thank you for getting that out to us ahead of time, even.
No problem, so, we have a number of items to go over this evening, those of you who checked your email about twenty minutes before the meeting, got an updated packet from me, as we had some, a couple of things changed literally today that will affect the budget. So, I'll go through these items, you have to keep scrolling down, Rob, after that stuff, you'll see a memo from me. Here it is, so the things that we need to go over tonight, the non-union salary increase, if any, to be included in the budget, we need to talk about the default budget, there will need to be a discussion about the PPC, that will need to have in non-public first, but then we'll need to come back out and deal with that in public. We'll need to talk about the warrant, and which articles will be included on the warrant that's brought to the public hearing, and then talk through the budget hearing itself, and how that will work. I'm going to suggest that for the budget hearing, after the board takes action tonight on all the different parts of the budget hearing, that the different folks who are assigned to present the various parts at the budget, at the public hearing, can meet with myself and/or Peter in the next few days and work out the slides for that, and work out the details for that presentation, so we're not spending board time doing that. But, I digress, so the first thing I want to update you on is, we've added about seventy-some thousand dollars to special education out-of-district tuition. You can surmise why we've made that change, and that's about all I wanna say about that, is we have, we have knowledge that leads us to believe we're going to be spending additional dollars, both this current school year and next school year for out-of-district tuition, and so that provides even more pressure on our current year's budget, we're in a spending freeze, as you know, but also needs, has an effect on next year's budget, and that's been added to the bottom line.
Adam, Pitt?
Yes, sir.
The three oh three, seven twenty-five is the same numbers in the previous budget that you submitted, so I'm not sure why there's, where the seven, seventy-eight thousand dollars is.
Yeah, in my table, it updated, and the other increases and decreases, the very bottom line, it didn't get added to the tuition line like it should have, I noticed that after the fact, so you notice the other increases and decreases line says one hundred and fourteen thousand, one eighty.
It's in there.
It's in there.
Seventy-eight of it is in there, and should be in the top line.
Correct, so that will be updated. So, that's not something I suspect the board will have much discussion about, the thing that you might have discussion about, and certainly will need to make a decision, is if there is going to be a salary increase pool for non-union staff members. I will be honest with you that I am not one-hundred percent confident I have all the staff members identified, I'm still finding my way around, you know, the Sahigan School District, but I believe there are seven people, including your principal and your other administrators, who are not affiliated with the PPC, who would not otherwise receive raises associated with the PPC, and so if you wanted to include a pool for those folks, it would, I've given you kind of four ideas of what you might consider there, so I'd ask the board, before we continue on to other discussion points, perhaps you'd be willing to discuss and make a decision about this one.
I wonder if we could talk about this in non-public as well, only because if you're not sure about the people involved in that pool.
Yeah.
I'd rather talk about the specific people involved in non-public.
That's not a problem.
If that's okay with you, Adam?
Yeah, so we can pause, we can come back to that.
Okay, is that okay with all of you, too?
I think it makes sense to do it after we have the general PPC agreement discussed as well.
Yeah, true.
That also makes sense, and I'm assuming we're gonna not do non-public right now, we're gonna save it.
To the end, yeah.
So, the operating budget I put together includes the seventy-three thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars, and for the sake of having a, for the sake of having a bookmark for the non-union salary increase, I did include a one and a half percent number, just because, so that brings your budget to exactly two percent, two-point-zero-zero percent, seventeen million, three forty-five, one seventy-five. There is no further action to be taken at this point until we have our discussions in non-public. So I think I can skip over that and go to the default budget, if that's okay, unless there's any questions about the operating budget.
I just wanna clarify, you included ten thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight, which is a one and a half percent?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Adam before we go into the default? Okay?
Okay, default budget, so primer on default budget law, for those, many of you are very familiar with it already, but because I like talking about the default budget for some reason, I'll share with you some basis on that. The default budget is not a budget. Uh, the default budget is not a budget, it's a calculation. That's the first thing. So you often hear, hear me refer to it as the default budget calculation. Um, that is because the way it works is you, as the school board, in your sole and exclusive, uh, power, determine the default budget calculation. It is not determined or influenced by the Department of Education, or the Department of Revenue Administration, or by the legislative body, which is the people that show up at deliberative session or vote during the second session. You are on your own to determine what the default budget calculation is going to be. You need to define that calculation based on the statute, RSA forty thirteen nine B, because if you don't, then if your operating budget is defeated and the default budget calculation becomes the appropriation from which you are to determine an operating budget, and you do it incorrectly, um, someone can take you to Superior Court and challenge your calculation, and, uh, your entire annual meeting can be thrown out, meaning you'd have to redo a public hearing, redo a deliberative session, redo voting, uh, because of, uh, an error you make in that calculation. So, the two points there are, number one, it is your job to determine it, and number two, uh, if you fail to follow the law, there is a chance that it can have repercussions, um, down the road. Um, uh, let's see. Next, uh, we have to disclose the default budget calculation at the public hearing. However, uh, the board can change the default budget calculation at any point or any number of times up until the moment that ballots are printed, uh, for the, for voting. So even after deliberative session, um, the default budget calculation can be amended by the, the school board up until that moment that the clerk prints the ballots. Um, so, uh, in short, the default budget calculation is supposed to be last year's budget. That's the overall concept of the default budget calculation. It should be last year's budget, and the changes to be made are for contractual, um, obligations, debt service, um, and one-time expenditures. Um, one-time expenditures are things not likely to recur. Uh, so for example, if paving had been included in the operating budget, that likely would not have been considered a one-time item because you did it last year and will likely do it next year. So it's not a one-time item. Um, the fact that we've removed it and put it on a warrant article now makes it a one-time item and is, is therefore removed from the default budget calculation. Um, if we were replacing textbooks on a regular basis, and if we did science last year and math this year and social studies a year after that, we wouldn't remove that as a one-time item because even though we're not buying science textbooks three years in a row, we are buying textbooks as a part of a recurring plan that the board has adopted. So, one-time items are defined, uh, in kind of that way, where it doesn't have to be the exact same item that we purchase year after year, it has to be the same concept, but the same conceptual, um, sort of thing. Um, but go back to the original idea, is it supposed to be kind of last year's budget? Um, so, what, uh, in my analysis, I identified, uh, the seventy-five thousand dollar storage building that was in the last year's budget as clearly a one-time item. Uh, we don't build storage items on a regular basis, um, and so that was removed from my default budget calculation that I'm bringing to you. The other thing I wanna bring to your attention, uh, which is significant, um, the staff members that we are removing, that we're reducing our force for next year's, and next year's proposed budget, those positions should be included in the default budget calculation because they represent last year's budget. Um, that's different from what has been done in the past year. Um, and I can tell you that I've spoken to our attorneys about this, uh, this is something I've, I've dealt with for many years. Um, that is the law. The law is on our side in making that determination. I will tell you, it's unlikely that if we remove those positions from the default budget calculation, that anyone would take us to court because our default budget is too low. That's an unlikely outcome, that someone would be aggrieved because our default budget calculation is too low. However, um, it is not, it's a, it's not wise, um, to not follow, um, the law, and so I've, um, included those positions in the default budget calculation I'm bringing to you this evening. Um, so all that said.
Can I say something?
Go ahead, Dwayne. Sorry to interrupt you.
On, on that subject, and I want to say it again, I respect that you respectfully disagreed with me, I will say again, that you'll do it this year, if you do it again next year, we're looking at a potential reduction of about a hundred students or a hundred and twenty-five students, to suggest you're gonna hang on to include in the budget teaching positions that you know are not going to be there. It appears to be unethical, and it leaves a bad taste in the mouths of many voters. I'm having contact with this. We know those positions are gone. I get the intent and the law, but you can maintain an incredibly high budget for the next few years, knowing that you have to reduce positions because your enrollment is going down. By, in the next two years, you anticipate a hundred and twenty-five students less. So, I would hope we reconsider that. Uh, to me, it's an ethical question, it's an ethical issue. Might have law on your side, but is it really a good idea? Is that really what you wanna tell the voters in this town?
Well, I think, as Adam said, that's something for the board to decide.
It's board's decision, clearly. Hello?
Oh, sorry, Dwayne.
On that subject, um, for, I don't know how long Betty was here, but we always subtracted those numbers out of the budget before. We always did that. Because her determination was, and I might get this wrong, but, um, her interpretation of it was, was that these people are not, are not planned to be necessary. Therefore, that since the teacher contracts, I think I might be paraphrasing here, they made, they're one-day, one-year contracts, basically. It, this, when a teacher signs their contract in April or whatever, it's, it's for one year. So they're not guaranteed necessarily the job for the following year. That, that's sort of her interpretation, or the way that she explained it to me. So therefore, they should be taken out of the default, uh, out of the default number. In other words, they're not planned for the following year. It's like, it's like if you had numbers in the budget for new bathrooms, and then the bathrooms are completed, the following year, you don't have to build bathrooms anymore, you don't include that number in calculating the default.
Steve?
So, I wanna say something too. I felt like Adam got cut off before he finished his thought.
Sorry.
I'd like to, Adam, to finish whatever else he wants to say before I comment on this item and everything else he might have said.
Uh, thank you, I was wrapping up, um, but I was going to say that the default budget calculation I'm bringing to you for this evening is eighteen million, four sixty-three, three eighty-five, which clearly you can tell is higher than the proposed budget. Um, I understand that creates an issue, um, that is an unpleasant one. However, uh, my experience around the state is that, uh, most school districts follow the law as strictly as they possibly can when it comes to the default budget calculation, um, because it is not meant to be, um, interpreted, it is meant to be utilized. So, um, while we will certainly support whatever decision the board makes, I want the board to be fully advised about what your legal counsel's advice is and what my advice to you is about the topic. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Pete?
Just along those lines, um, if, if I'm looking at these numbers correctly, that the default budget is about a million dollars or more higher than we have as the operating budget above. So even if, I, I thought it was four positions you were talking about in terms of the teachers that would be removed. Even if you remove those, wouldn't the fault still be higher?
Uh, the fault?
Because of certain, you know, you go with last year's fixed budget plus whatever other increases there were. So, I, I understand the point, but I, I think in this instance, this just happens to be a weird case where, I think no matter what we did, the fault is still gonna be higher.
Uh, it's, it would be close. It's, the, the difference between the two right now is about, um, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, and so the.
But I said that the operating budget is seventeen million, three forty-five, and the fault budget is eighteen, four thirty-five.
The, um, and my, my numbers have the, the budget for the, um, general fund, not for the entire food service and, um, uh, special revenue added and top that, so that's the difference.
So, so then, what is the difference, Adam, between the default, as you calculated, and the proposed budget, given the seventeen, three forty-five, one seventy-five? I remember those numbers, but.
Yep, the difference between the two right now is four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars.
So the default is higher by four hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars?
It is.
Which would be, in effect, the difference of the, the four staff, yeah, closely, close to that.
Yeah, there, there's more than that. There's also the, uh, the facilities reduction in force and the paraprofessional reduction in force as well. Those, those things are all.
Yeah, well, the, so Betty's proposal, Betty's proposition was that we always take the reduction in force, planned reduction in force out, and that's how we always calculated the defaults before.
I understand, I'm recommending.
So, I, I know that, I know there's a difference in interpretation here, but I'm just saying, there may be an issue of consistency with the voting public here. You know, the voters expect, since we've always done it that way, they've always seen declining enrollment means, you know, uh, default budget that's a lower number than the regular budget. And we come back with this budget, because of some legal thing, it's a, it's a discontinuity in the way voters were thinking about how the default was actually calculated.
Steve?
So, um, I'm reminded, I think it's Harry Truman, social studies teachers here, correct me, who, who once begged, uh, someone to send him an economist with only one hand. Because every time he asked for an opinion, the economist always said, "Well, you do this, but on the other hand, you do that." I think that's what we've got with, with the attorneys here. Um, Dave's absolutely correct. The, the history, and I, I've been here since before SB two was implemented. So, I, and I worked closely with our, our finance director at the time when SB two was, was implemented here to help craft the first fault budget. Um, and the school districts have always done it, as Dave said, have always said, "If, if we see an expense that is going to stop, that's not an ongoing expense anymore, so it comes out with default." Uh, so that's been the practice and expectation of voters, and I think in, if I can hear, lost by Truman, the fear dealing of the board with the voters over the history of, um, the SB two forum in Sahigan and in the Amherst School District. And although I can't say that I recall a specific instance, I'm ninety-nine point nine-nine percent sure that the same policy is followed by the Amherst Board Selectment. So the only, um, the only governing body I can't speak to of my knowledge is the Mount Vernon Board Selectment. So I think the voters all expect us to do what we've always done, which is to say, just because it, it was an expense for the last five years, we don't expect it to expense next year, it doesn't, it's a, it's a determining expense. You know, we don't need to buy buggy whips anymore, we're not gonna keep that amount in the budget. Not that I wanna refer, God help me, George teaches buggy whips, but, um, it was a rockin' analogy. Um, so I, I would, I, I agree with Dwayne and with Dave, um, that we really need to, to do the default with the rift salaries out of it. And that's what our voters expect.
Your reference to your, your point for Mount Vernon, we're still in SB two, so we'll talk about it at the, uh, town hall.
Oh, you, oh, you, the old, the old-fashioned way, so you don't have a default budget, so it doesn't matter.
Any other thoughts?
Excuse me, sounds like you guys are whispering.
Uh, Steve always sounds like he's whispering, I don't know why, he has a soft voice.
What if we?
I agreed with you, Dwayne.
Pete, did you have a comment?
I, I was just gonna ask if, if, is there?
Wayne, you're now sitting in the middle of the room with us.
Oh, I don't want him that close.
Great.
So I understand how it's been done in the past. Is there a compelling reason that's driving us to change it this way? And the reason I ask that is that if there is a valid reason and you wanna change it going forward, would it be possible to introduce why you're doing it that way and then still show both numbers, so, you know, it's obvious what's happening, but then give the reason why the default budget would be there? I don't know if, if, if it's worth doing that, but, you know, just for the honesty part of it, you know, show, this is really what's happening, but this is why we choose to go this way.
Dave?
But, but the problem with that, Pete, is that only one of these warrant articles is gonna appear on the, on the ballot. You know, and it, if it's, I don't wanna give, if it's the Adam version, it's gonna be a higher number. If it's the version that follows what Steve is saying, it's gonna be a lower number, I'm saying.
No, I'm saying, if, if, if there's a compelling reason for us to go with a higher number, put that in, and then in the explanation, show both numbers, you know, at the public hearing. Show both numbers, say, "This is how we did in the past, this is what it normally would be, but because of, you know, this, this, and this reason, we're choosing to change."
Transparency.
Thoughts on that idea?
Yeah, I mean, I, I kinda agree with, with Pete. Um, it's one of the, it's a case of ripping the bandaid off at some point or another, you gotta do it. Um, and if you wanna stay within the law, then you should, but I, I, I don't like to trick, uh, maybe not the right word, but, um, you know, the, the taxpayer into voting in our budget because the default is higher, you know? Um, but I think, you know, like I said, we, we need to do our due diligence to follow the law as much as possible, and if we can do it in a reasonable way that explains how we got there, um, I think it makes sense.
I'm okay with that too. You guys, I mean, I know you are, Pete, 'cause you brought it up.
No, I disagree with myself.
What did Rob reference that one? Um, Howard, you have any, given your thoughts?
I agree with him. I, I think if we can show both at the public hearing, at least people would understand why we're doing this. And, and make them know that it's a, it is a, a law requirement, that we have to do it a certain way. Not that we're doing it against the law.
Right.
The other way.
Just a different interpretation. Steve, how are you with that?
I don't wanna do it. I, I wanna, I don't wanna do it the old-fashioned way, because I, I think, I think that if, if we ask enough lawyers, we can get a balance on both sides.
Dave?
I agree with Steve. I think it's just too confusing, and we've had a standard that we've followed for god knows how many years, and it's the same standard that the Amherst School District follows.
Well, they might be changing that too. They, they're changing this year? There's something?
No, no, I mean, it's the same standard up until now that the Amherst School District has followed.
Right, that, I guess, no, I didn't, I didn't think of that earlier, but knowing the school, the Amherst School District is changing, kind of makes me lean towards being consistent with the Amherst School District. Are they gonna show both? No, actually, it doesn't matter if they're showing both, we still can, but I do think we should be consistent with the Amherst School District. Mount Vernon is SB two, so it's not a.
Well, Mount Vernon still has a default, the school district still has a default budget.
Right, but I mean, it's just, it's not decided on by public hearing, right? I mean, or decided on just by the board by public hearing. It's discussed there.
No, it's the same, the school district follows the same process, exactly the same process.
Yeah, I was referring to the, the.
The town, the slot, the town.
Oh, okay, okay.
They're still the old-fashioned town meeting.
Okay.
So, the only, the other question I have is, have you, what does a town do? I don't remember, they, I think they compute default budget the same way we have done it up until now. And this is gonna be, well, this is gonna be two governmental bo, or one governmental body doing it one way and two governmental bodies doing it another way, and it, it, it makes a lot of confusion.
Well, does anyone wanna make a motion?
Can, can I just ask one more question?
Yeah.
Uh, Pete, before we make the motion, and, and I guess my concern is, this is the opinion of an attorney, and I question, I'm the public attorney down there, that we're also look at the fact that we know our expenses, um, for, for example, there are going to be four, five, or six one-time contracts that are not going to be reviewed, so why would they be in the budget? I mean, this, I have, well, I mean, this is what attorneys do, and it's, not to cast light the light, but this is not a good thing, and I think if we wanna move in that direction, you're potentially looking for a taxpayer report. Now.
Dwayne, I was in the middle of asking a question before you started, I'm looking at it a different way. And the question I was going to ask is, the default budget goes in as another warrant article, right?
No, it goes, it, it's included in the operating budget warrant article, and it's a.
Oh, 'cause I, I was gonna say, that would be, that would be the way to get the opinion. I thought, I thought it was a separate thing that got voted on.
No, it's, it's a, it's, the voters have a binary decision.
But at the, but then at the public hearing, don't. But at the, but then at the public hearing, don't, isn't there a discussion on both separately?
The default budget is, has to be disclosed at the public hearing, it does not have to be discussed.
Okay.
It can be, there's nothing that precludes you, but it's not required to be discussed.
Does anybody want to make a motion?
Well, I don't want to.
Go ahead, Dave. Okay.
So, the, the enrollment is going to decline for the next couple of years, at least the next couple of years, and so we're, by this decision that we make today, you're going to have a situation where the default budget will be higher for a couple of years until the enrollment levels out. It's not gonna, you know, it's going to create the same kind of confusion every year, and it just doesn't seem like it's compatible with the way we want to budget.
Well, let me ask you, let me ask a corollary question to that. The opposite issue is if we know for sure that we're getting three hundred more students next year, would we include those additional teachers that we would have to have in the default as well? If we know we're going to have the enrollment.
I think we should, we.
But we, but we cannot.
We know that we will need X number of teachers.
That's the issue, that's the issue is you can't do it that way.
Yeah, but Adam, the growth side is much more explainable. It's much more explainable.
I'm not saying the law makes sense. I'm not, it, it doesn't. The default budget law is very difficult. Um, it's, it's.
You're right.
It, it's, it's very tough, but in districts with declining enrollment, there's this issue. Districts with growing enrollment have the opposite issue, where there's a huge difference between their default and their proposed, and they have to hope like heck that people come out and support their budget, or they won't have the teachers they need. So, it's, it, it has to.
That's not our issue today. Right now, we're in declining mode, and the last thing I would want to do at the board members is to suggest to the public that you should take our proposed number because the higher number, that the default is much higher, basically putting the gun in their hands.
Steve?
So, I'll go down to this, Cory. I'll, I'll move to, uh, I'll move to exclude the rift positions from the default budget.
Second.
What was the motion?
To remove the rift positions from the default budget.
And there was a second, Dave seconded. Further discussion?
Great.
Pete?
I, I just want to go back to Adam. He, he had a reason to want to change it. I mean, I know it's what the law says, but what, what was the reason that prompted you to, at this point, decide that we should do it exactly the way the law says, rather than how we've been doing it in the past?
Because that's how I've always done, done it, and that's how I do things. I follow the statutes clearly and follow legal advice directly, um, and that's my job to advise you about what the law says and what our attorneys suggest.
Steve?
So, in Adam's defense, it is a horrible law, it's poorly crafted and drafted, and districts all over the state interpret it many ways, which leads to a lot of chaos all the time, as we are in now.
All right, there's been a motion and a second. Any more, more discussion before people feel comfortable voting on it? Or questions? Tim?
Wyndham did it this way?
Yes, sir.
And?
Everywhere, everywhere that I've been.
And how was it explained, the public hearing and, and, uh?
Yeah, my, uh, my, in my first year in Wyndham, the default budget was higher than the proposed, because we made significant cuts in the proposed operating budget. And some folks at the time said, "Why in the world, how can your default be higher? That doesn't make any rational sense." Explain the same way I'm explaining now. The default is supposed to be conceptually last year's budget, that's the concept. It's supposed to be changed for direct contractual expenses, one-time expenditures, and debt service. That's it. Um, it's, it's not supposed to be subject to a lot of interpretation or prerogative. It is, because it's poorly written at times. There's times where it's, people have to say, "Is this a one-time expenditure, or is this not a one-time expenditure?" Um, but that's, that's it.
When we go forward and we go to the, the public hearing, the public has a chance to change our budget. Do they also get a chance to change the default budget?
No. But again, the board can, so, um, the, the board has the opportunity to change the default budget calculation number up until the point ballots are printed. However, we do have to disclose a number. At the public hearing.
Which is why, you know, it may have been misunderstood about, you know, whether it was a separate one, but it would still come up at the public hearing and the deliberative. So, if we, I, I think it would be good to be consistent with what Amherst is doing. And if we did go that way, and you go to the public hearing, and people speak up and say, "No, we don't want this," then we could very easily change back to what we had been doing, but it.
Certainly, if all of you are going to get voted out of office because of this change, then certainly that makes your decision easier.
I'm not worried.
But you're, you're right. There's nothing that precludes you from hearing input on the default budget at both the public hearing and the deliberative.
And so, the way I look at it is that the, the cuts would continue, you know, maybe for a couple of years, but at some point, they're going to stop, and then things go back to normal. So, if that is the right.
At what point do they go back to normal?
Well, at some point, you're going to stop cutting teachers, or else there's not going to be anything to be worth budgeting, because there's going to be three people left.
Dave?
So, um, from a taxpayer point of view, what are their options at that point? Let's say we go with what you're saying the law is, and they see the default budget being a million dollars higher than the, or five hundred thousand dollars roughly?
Four hundred.
Four hundred thousand dollars, higher than the proposed budget, and they're looking at it and saying, and then it'll come out that if we put a default in as we had done before, that default number will be lower than the budget, by a little bit.
Hundred thousand.
By a hundred thousand dollars roughly.
Right.
Okay, so, why, is it likely? I think it's likely that a taxpayer is going to propose a budget that's a hundred thousand dollars lower than what we're getting. So, we're just begging to, it's almost like we're begging to have a rebellion. Dwayne says rebellion, I'm not sure it's rebellion, but it's going to be a, you know, a problematic decision, and that, that'll either come up at the hearing or come up at the, well, I'm not sure the hearing is enough time to get people to act a bit on this, but certainly at the deliberative session.
It'd be at the deliberative, but.
Yeah, it would be at the deliberative, and something is going to happen there that I think is undesirable. And I, you know, I, I would like to suggest that we do it the same way for this year, and then maybe look at it over a long-range period of time and say, you know, the following year, and say, "How would we actually want to change this?" Because I think it's going to be a very complicated thing for people to understand the first year out. Why the default budget is so much higher than the regular budget, and why they don't have a choice of making it a default. It just doesn't compute with the way we've done it for so many years.
I agree, it is not intuitive. It's not.
Tim?
So, if we can change the default budget right up until the ballots are printed, um, how, it is just however we want, in other words.
Yeah, right, is it against the law?
Yeah, exactly, so, that's my point, right? So, if we have a, a law, let me finish my, train of thought, and then you can interject.
No, I'll, I'll answer.
We have a law that says it has to be the way you explained, but then you're also saying that we can change it up until ballots are printed. So, if we change it to something less than that, then are we now against the law?
No.
All right.
I mean, you're not, you're not any more against the law. You have the ability to change the default budget calculation until the point ballots are printed. The only check and balance there is against this whole, in this whole process, only comes if two things, three things happen. Number one, the operating budget is voted down. No one has a cause of action to take until the default budget calculation becomes our appropriation, okay? So, the operating budget has to be voted down. Second, someone has to be aggrieved by it and take us to court, in superior court. And third, a judge has to agree that we were in the wrong in how we interpreted and applied the default budget statute. That's the only check and balance.
Steve, now it's your turn to interject.
So, first of all, I think to, to clarify, Adam stated about up until the ballots are printed. They, they go to the printer like a day or two after the deliberative session, so.
Yeah, agreed.
So, it's essentially that. Uh, we have had, over the years, some very fine-grained adjustments to default budget over the whole process up until the last minute, usually because someone says, "Oh, that thing for ten thousand two hundred and four dollars, that was really a one-time," or, "Oh, that's really an ongoing thing, we misclassified." They're little things. It's never been a, a large change, but the changes have happened on a regular basis, just in insignificant amounts, so.
The scary thing is he came up with ten thousand two hundred and four dollars as if there really was such a thing.
He's two thousand seven five.
Yeah, yeah, ninety-nine. Tim?
So, I know there's a motion on the floor, and we need to.
Yep.
To act on that. What I would like to propose, and I won't make the motion yet, um, but that we consider going to the public hearing with the law firm, right? Um, and then maybe between it and the deliberative, then decide as a body, well, this is what we really want the default budget to be, and then we can, you know, go to the deliberative.
After hearing feedback from the public?
Yeah.
But you're right, we do have to settle the first motion first.
Yeah, sorry.
So, there is a motion on the table to withdraw the rift.
I, I had, I had one more comment on that as well.
Okay.
But I would keep it, keep in mind that we have yet a different opinion on the law, that does not suggest, or doesn't suggest that our previous position to guide law. I don't know, but we had, yeah, a different opinion. I don't want to be dogmatic to the degree to say that the law does this, therefore, we're right to do this, because if we are challenged to take it in court because someone does have problems with us, then that's yet another expense we can account for. So, I can think there's got to be a level of common sense here. We already know this decision is not wanting to be utilized next year, so, that's, that's all I can sustain.
All right, so, the motion was that we take, or that we leave the rifts in the default budget by, that was.
To take or think about.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that we take the rifts out of the default budget, um, and it was seconded by Dave, so, all in favor of taking the rifts out of the default budget?
They need to do a roll call vote since he's.
Yeah, that's, yeah, we'll do a roll call.
Roll call.
Yep. So, Dwayne? Dwayne?
Take it out. Yes, take it out.
Yes.
So, you're in favor.
His vote is yes.
Yep, you're in favor of the motion. Steve?
Yes.
Yes.
Dave?
No.
Pete?
No.
Mary Lou, no? Uh, Howard said no, Mary Lou, no?
Tim, no.
Okay, so that motion does not pass, so, Tim, did you now want to make another motion?
Uh, I don't know if we need to make a motion, I, or do we?
You don't at this point.
No?
Oh.
Well, I, I was just trying to find that we ought to keep in mind.
You'll, you'll need to adopt the default budget to bring forward to the public hearing, and that will need to be a motion.
But I do think you need to bring it to the, the public and explain to them why there's a difference of cost.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreement on that.
And if there's massive feedback against it, then we just change it right there.
Yeah, but I think the explanation is key.
Yeah.
Okay.
But you, we do need a motion to accept it to bring forward to the public hearing, though.
All right, so I'll make that motion.
Okay.
Bring the, the default budget as.
Presented.
Presented in Adam's reservation.
I'll second it.
To the public.
I, I have a suggested motion, if you wouldn't mind.
Go ahead.
It's in the packet, but.
Is it in the latest packet?
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
The one that's emailed, right?
Yeah, the one that's stuck in email per hour right now?
No, no, it's, it's here in the packet.
With the, the updated number.
With the updated number, but the, but the motion is there.
Oh, okay.
I could read it, and you can move it, how's that? So, to adopt the fiscal year 2018 default budget calculation of eighteen million four hundred and sixty-three thousand three hundred and eighty-five dollars for the South Heagan Cooperative School District, to be disclosed at the public hearing on January eleventh, 2017, subject to further revision by the school board prior to the second session of the annual meeting on March fourteenth, 2017.
Yeah, that. But I'll second that.
I don't know if you, okay, and, and Howard seconded, and I don't know if your, your second one, 2017, was in, okay.
I said seventeen.
You said seventeen, I know.
But it's in the second session.
Which is probably the reason why I caught that it wasn't.
I said seventeen.
No, I'm saying it is in the second, second section in February, the vote.
That's the first session. First session is deliberative, second session is voting. So, you can revise it up to the second session, but the cutoff point is when ballots are printed.
So, you have the public hearing in January.
That's not, that's not.
You don't, you don't have to deliberate if it.
Correct, it can be.
That's in February.
It can be revised up to the second session, which is.
Oh, you're just saying it's going to be done prior to that.
Between this time and that.
It can be sooner, but it just, yeah, okay.
Dave?
I'm just, question, Adam, I'm just questioning the number here. I thought you read out the number eighteen thousand four sixty-three, three eighty-five?
Yes, sir.
And that's a million one higher than the budget that we're proposing right now.
No, but that, that doesn't include the food service and all that.
Doesn't include food service, okay.
And, and federal funds.
That's what I did before, yeah.
Right, no, so I want to add that back in, because it's, because we're going to get down to the default budget in, increase, a default budget higher than the, the budget we're proposing by four hundred and some thousand, what is the number?
The budget that I have is your budget right now, including the special education change from today, and including one and a half percent non-union salary increase for the sake of discussion, is eighteen million fourteen thousand, fourteen thousand six hundred and fifty-two dollars. And that includes food service and federal funds.
Okay.
And that, that's going to be discussed at the public hearing, I think.
Correct, well, that number will be determined tonight after our non-public, and we discussed the two items in non-public, then it'll come out, and the board will need to come up with that number.
But that, that total, the total number does show up.
Correct, yeah.
So, in times when the default was lower, we always tried to indicate where we took money out. This time, the default is going to be substantially higher. Are we going to indicate where we're going to spend that money? Are we going to indicate that we don't spend that money, or what? I mean, what's?
It's a board decision. I would, I would assume that the board would make it very clear to voters that you're not planning to spend that, those funds. I mean.
So, then we're back to the.
There's almost a zero likelihood that voters will vote in the default budget if it's higher. That's not, it's just not going to happen.
No, I, I, well.
In the event that it.
It's possible, right, but.
It's possible.
Some voters may choose that.
In the event that it does happen, you could say, "As a board, we have no plans to spend those funds, and all the difference will be returned as surplus."
We never spend every dollar that's budgeted. I mean, we.
On average, it's four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars in the last eight years.
Right.
Four hundred and twenty-two thousand, a hundred thousand, four hundred twenty-two.
Twenty-two thousand dollars.
Four hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Thousand dollars, right, yeah, sorry. Then I can give you the sense, too, if you wanted it.
Can someone second it?
No, no one did.
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
No, Howard did second, Howard seconded it, yes. So, so, well, then, after Howard seconded, Dave asked a question.
Yeah, yeah.
Any further questions or discussion? All right, seeing.
So, what, so, so what, I, make it clear to me what we're voting on here again?
We're voting, so, so, in your pocket.
The actual number.
Yeah, in your pocket, in your packet, um, is the motion, and the number is different. It's one million eight hundred, I'm sorry, eighteen million four hundred and sixty-three thousand three eighty-five. But other than that, the motion is the same as what's in the packet.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what we're.
No, I got, I got the number, I got the number, but I'm trying to understand the logic here.
Because we have, we have to come to public hearing with a default budget number, and so we have to vote on going forward with this default budget number. Doesn't mean that we can't change it at the, after the public hearing, but we have to come forward with some presentation of a default budget number, so that's what we're doing, is voting on that.
Well, it seems to me, this is just a personal thing, it seems to me if I voted for Steve's motion, then I should vote against this. It just seems to me that that would be the logical conclusion.
That's your.
Because I really wanted the default number that's lower, in effect.
Okay, well, that motion failed, and so, you know, it's up to you whether you want to, you know, vote for or against this one, so, if there's no other further discussion or questions. Go ahead, Dwayne.
I, I agree with that logic. I don't want a large default number.
Okay, well, you, you can make that known in your vote, but right now, we have to, there's a motion on the floor?
I will have.
Okay.
I just want to make sure what the logic was here, so I know, I know what we're. I just want to make sure what the logic was here, so I know what I'm doing.
Okay. All right, so I think there's no further questions or discussion, I think, right, that we haven't covered. All right, so we'll do a roll call again. Dwayne, and again, you're voting for the number of 18, you know, for or against the number of $18,463,385. So, Dwayne?
Nary. Nary.
Steve?
Just one guess.
Steve is a no. Dave is?
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said just one guess.
I said one yes, not...
Oh, okay. Okay?
No.
Okay?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so, two against, and, what'd you say?
Five to two.
Five, four, and two against.
Never what word you used?
Five to two?
No, 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 you said, I said two, I thought you had a fancy word for it, okay. I was going to learn a vocabulary word, Adam.
Oh, yeah.
Four.
All right, all right. Thank you, guys. So we have something to go forward with. So...
Can I continue on my list here?
Yes, continue, yes.
The warrant, I included a draft warrant for you. I've since added the $150,000 warrant article for paving. The warrant articles that I have, that I've collected so far, are, of course, the election of officers, as I understand it, and correct me if I'm wrong, two school board members from Amherst, one from Monvernon.
Correct.
Yep?
Yep.
I know two from Amherst, I don't know who from Monvernon.
Pym.
This is not the year for the clerk, treasurer, or moderator. Article two would be the operating budget. Article three I have right now is the $65,000 unassigned fund balance article to be added to the school maintenance fund, assuming that goes forward. The $150,000 warrant article for paving is on there. And then, the only thing that's not there, because the board hasn't voted yet, it was tabled, was David Chen's motion regarding the contingency fund. The things that the board needs to decide this evening is, are there any other appropriations you want to bring forward? You'll need to vote on each one of these appropriations to bring them forward to the public hearing, because as I mentioned earlier, no other appropriations can be brought forward after the public hearing. And the other choice, you'll, the two other choices you have is the order of warrant articles, which is a minor point, but is, can be important. And then, second, the articles three and four for those funds, whether they will be funded from surplus only, or whether they'll come from taxation, if there is no surplus. All board decisions and all that need to be decided this evening.
Why don't we start one at a time, then? The first one you have listed here, besides PPC, which we'll talk about in non-public, is the warrant article to place $65,000 from the year-end unassigned fund balance for maintenance expenses. So, that's something that we typically have, it's something that is recommended, it's prudent to have that maintenance fund, but open to other opinions or suggestions as to whether we have that as a warrant article.
What is the current balance?
I anticipated that question. I'm working on pulling that up right now.
I thought we talked about that already.
We did. I don't remember.
Yeah.
Trying to get to like 200.
Yeah.
It'll take me a minute to find it, but we did talk about it at the last meeting.
So we'll move on while Adam looks at that.
Well, my question associated with that should be included in the warrant article.
We never have included it before.
No, we talked about it.
Yeah.
We're doing things differently, I understand. Should we include that? Should the taxpayer know?
No, like Steve said, it always, it always comes out in the discussion of the warrant article, this is what the current budget is, but this is what we're trying to get to, and that's why we're proposing this. So it's always been in the discussion, but not in the article itself.
Well, Adam looks for that. Any other questions? Dave?
Actually, this is related, Adam, I don't want to disturb Adam, but...
No, go ahead.
Sorry. In the, the increase of the transportation line, that is the increase for the vocational education transportation issue, is that, is that correct?
Among other things.
The 186?
It also includes increases for the, being in the third year of the contract.
Yeah.
And also shortfalls for special education transportation that are, where we're underfunded this year as well for that. So it's all of those, those things.
So, you and I had a discussion about this, but you were in a process of discussing this with Carrying Hands?
Yes.
And has that progressed at all, so that we, so that there's adjustment that we could make here? Is there any possibility of an adjustment there?
Not at this point. We've met with them once, we're planning another meeting with them, and I would not recommend making any change at this point.
Any other questions on this warrant? The expendable trust, $65,000 from the unassigned fund balance? Steve? Oh, I didn't see, okay. I didn't know who was first. Pym, go ahead.
I think one of the questions that Adam asked was whether or not we want to keep
this coming from the unassigned fund balance, and that's my recommendation is to keep that that way. I don't want additional taxation to get there.
I agree.
Do you think about the bathroom thing?
No.
No, no, no. $65,000.
$65,000, it's only if there's a surplus.
All right, so...
Right, right, well...
Not make a taxable income, not make a taxation, Pym is suggesting.
So...
I can answer your question before, if you don't mind. I don't mean to cut you off, but I, actually, I do mean to cut you off, but...
Answer Dwayne's question, sure.
The special education fund...
Feel free, Adam.
The special education fund, which is not on the table, that has $302,000 in it. The school maintenance fund has $174,000 and change in it. And then there's another fund for unfunded liabilities that has about $51,000 in it.
What do you recommend for expendable trust, facilities, expendable trust? It's 174 now?
Yeah, I think about 250 is what to shoot for. I will also say that after we do a capital needs assessment, that I can predict with some degree of certainty that the amount that we're going to need to spend on an annual basis is going to be higher than that amount.
Okay.
So, I wouldn't be surprised if we're spending $250,000 to $350,000 a year into the fund, just to keep our capital needs where they need to be.
Right, so we're not having broken down bathroom stalls.
Correct, and, yeah.
Steve?
I agree with, you said now that it should come from the unfunded, the expense balance. Pym, of course, I always agree with you.
Always quote him.
Except what I don't. But I also like to point out that this may be the first year we don't have that money in the, this could be the first year that we, even if it passes, nothing goes in.
Yeah, considering we're on a budget freeze and we budgeted so tightly last year, but we can, we can still, in the event that we do have it. But I agree with Pym, I don't want it to come from taxation. Dave?
I don't know how this idea works, maybe you can help me work this through, Adam. But since we're looking at about $14,000 for this, for the transgender neutral bathrooms...
No, no, that's just for repairs.
Repairs, no, I'm saying is, okay, I sent it to the wrong idea, but we're still looking for $14,000, basically do the repairs, whether or not it's for new footballs or whatever, it's still $14,000.
Yep.
Could we, because it's really, I don't, I don't like the idea of putting money into the expendable trust for maintenance and then pulling it out again. You see what I'm saying? We could just appropriate the money now, if there is a fund balance, as we do at the end of May anyway, right? You see what I'm saying?
I do, yes, I do.
Is that, is that a wrong idea, or is it...
No, I, I agree with you that if, if the plan is to put $65,000 in, and then immediately take $14,000 back out, that, that seems less than transparent in some ways.
Right.
I agree with that. So, my conversation, another board member asked me this question today, and my answer was, if we need to do the repairs now, because we have a pressing need and it just has to be done, then I'd recommend we take the funds out of the capital reserve fund now to do that, because our budget's tight anyway, might as well do that. We could also defer that decision and say that if at the end of the year the money's not there, then we'll take it out of the capital reserve fund. There's, there's no timeliness issue there. However, given that this, these repairs are not pressing in nature, and they can wait, there's a couple of options. The board can add $14,000 and change to your operating budget proposal that you bring forward to voters. I suppose you could add a warrant article, although that would, wouldn't, would seem small in comparison. Or you could say, we're going to defer, and if, take it out of the capital reserve fund if necessary, next year at some point.
We can discuss that further under action items later. I'd rather stick with the warrant articles and get those, you know, put away, if that's okay, Dave, that way, because we want to talk about whether we're going to put this on the, you know, put this as a warrant. And so I'd like to kind of get that motion voted on.
What did you say was in the special ed trust?
300.
300.
Both, no. It's 381. It's a 303 plus the 78.
No, no, he's talking about what's in the special ed trust fund.
All right, all right, all right, okay, all right. I thought he was talking about the budget number.
Which could be, could be used to offset this year's portion of whatever this new is going to expect taxes.
Seventy-something thousand dollars, yeah.
That's exactly what this was intended.
And likely will, yes.
All right, so does anybody want to make a motion? The motion is in the packet. No, I don't think, no.
Does not.
I don't think anybody, I don't think anybody made the motion yet.
I think I said that I wanted, yeah, that I suggested.
No, Pym just said that he wanted to keep it on the, from the unassigned fund balance and not have it come from taxation, but he didn't make a motion.
Can I make a motion?
So, Pym, yeah. Oh, okay, you're not going to read it? We're all waiting with bated breath.
This one?
Yeah, I have a motion that's about this.
Oh. This is the old stuff, so...
I think it's page 25, at least that's in my packet.
Right, right there.
This guy? Okay. To place a warrant article to add $65,000 from the year-end unassigned fund balance available on 6/30/2017 to the previously established fund for maintenance expenses.
I hear a second. Steve seconds. All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, the, this is the maintenance one, right?
Yeah.
And the currently is, remind me again how much money we have in there?
$174,000.
$174,000, so it would add 65 to the 174.
240.
Yep.
240. How high has it been in the past?
No idea.
You'll have to find out.
I don't think it's ever, if it ever hit 200, it just barely cracked it.
But Adam said he recommends 250 to be in those expendable trust funds, and that with the facilities plan coming up in the next year or so, we probably are going to need even more than that in there. That's the logic.
We used to work on Jim Miner's recommendation from many years ago, which was a 200,000 target, which we, I don't think we ever really got to it, maybe I went close briefly.
Well, the only thing that I think about is that these expendable trusts, including, by the way, the contingency fund that I've been talking about before, is it's just basically a piggy bank to stuff taxpayer dollars. And, you know, if we're just continually going to do that, I just, you know, I don't, not sure that that's the right thing to do necessarily.
Well, I mean, the way we've always looked at it, actually, and I still look at it, is like a savings account, and like you wouldn't want to now have a savings account for, well, I mean, you have a savings account in case you need a new roof or something, right? I mean, it's the same type of thing. I mean, it's prudent to have, you know, if we didn't have our expendable trust, we would not have been able to put the new roof on a couple of years ago. And part of it came from that.
But I'll remind you that the, the, I'm going to say this wrong, the leftover dollars from the budget's averaged $422,000 a year. So we always have plenty of money.
But we usually give it back to the taxpayer. We don't generally typically spend it.
Agreed, saying, but it's every year. It's like that piggy bank opens up every year with $422,000.
Well...
Every year.
And then we shut it, because we close the account and give it back to the taxpayer.
Agreed, no, I agree with that. But if it's showing up every year, it's the extra piggy bank that's there, that's what I'm saying.
I know, I think we've had that discussion before, and I think you've had it with Adam, too, is that we can't budget so closely that we end up with, in the negative at the end of the year. Steve, do you want to add?
I'll draw two differences between this expendable trust fund and your average unexpendable fund balance. First of all, we don't get it every year, it's very likely, it will be very small this year. More importantly, we don't know what it is until late in the year. We know in April or May, and a decision has to be made about how to handle it before June 30th, which for us is typically the June 1st and 3rd, 4th meeting. So it doesn't allow for thoughtful planning of expenditure, which the expendable trust fund does, because we're required to go through this long process to expend out of it. So, nothing is spent cavalierly or hastily. So it actually provides more protection for the taxpayer that the expenditures are well considered and needed.
So any further discussion or questions? All right, seeing none. There was a motion and a second, so all in favor, and we'll do roll call again. Dwayne?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Dave?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Mary Lou, yes. Pym?
Yes.
Okay, so unanimous to put this, the motion or the article on as an unside, from year-end unassigned fund balance, I wanted to be clear on that for Pym's sake.
Next is the warrant article for paving, which I assume the board wants to put on, but someone would need to make a motion, and you need to decide whether that will come from surplus or from direct taxation.
I'll move to put that on, on the warrant, direct taxation.
Is the word in your show?
Yeah. It's in the, it's in the unanimity section of the meetings.
I can read it, if you'd like.
No, that's, I got it, I got it.
Again, I'll read it, since I'm going to be the one who printed it before I came here.
Yeah.
Sahigan Cooperative School District raise and appropriate $150,000 for the purpose of paving part of Sahigan driveways and parking spaces, majority vote required.
I'll second.
Okay, Pym seconds. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. We'll do roll call. Dwayne?
Aye.
Aye.
Steve?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Mary Lou, yes. Pim?
Yes.
Okay, great, it's unanimous.
So, my last question for the board would be, are there any other warrant articles that anyone would like to bring forward and discuss? Because this is your last chance.
Pim says no. Steve? Any other warrant articles you'd like to bring forward?
No.
Dave?
No.
Pete?
No.
Mary Lou, no. Dwayne?
No.
Okay.
So, then the only other topic I have before I can yield is the public hearing presentation, if we could make assignments for who's going to do what, and then we can make plans to meet with various people to work on slides.
And the other thing, I know we're all used to this, and I, and Adam and I talked about today and he's more than willing to do it, is below each slide, Betty used to make notes, you know, talking points for us so that we made sure we covered everything that Adam felt was important, and so that we felt comfortable that we were covering the right things. So, Adam has agreed to do that. And then, Adam said this earlier, I don't know if everybody caught it though, but we have a work session scheduled for Monday night, and as Adam and I discussed, or I'll take credit for it, one less meeting is always nice. If people feel comfortable selecting their parts of the presentation with the notes that Adam will add, you're free, as Adam said earlier, to meet with Adam and/or Peter for further information or questions, but it would save a meeting of all of us trying to do different sections of the budget. I mean, I don't really need to hear about your section, Pim, you don't need to hear about mine, you know, we just need to be comfortable. You do want to, all?
Maybe, we'll see.
You'll hear it January eleventh.
Okay, good enough for me.
So, you guys had a chance, obviously, to look through. Is there anyone dying to do a certain part? Actually, Steve, I know what you're going to say.
I have a question.
Dwayne?
I do, you have another question. With respect to the budget, the number that has been suggested, is that what we're running with?
We've tabled that until we go into non-public and come back out.
Okay.
Steve?
So, my role today is to champion tradition and conservatism. I think our habit of getting together in that prep meeting before the public session, and then again before the delivery session, we have good discussions, we come together with, we find better ways to present material than any one of us would have come up with on our own. I would, God help me, never if I say this, I'd rather have another meeting, because I think we get a better product presented to the public by doing it that way than doing it individually.
Okay. Yeah, it's always been a good meeting, it's always been a productive meeting, and while I don't need to hear about Pim's section of the budget, it really has helped in the past bouncing ideas off one another. Well, how's everybody else feel about that? It'd be Monday at six.
I'm actually okay with it.
Okay. Dave?
Yep.
Pete? Yeah, okay. Dwayne? Oh, actually, you're not going to be here, you're going to call in.
I have to call in, but I think we should have a meeting.
Okay. Okay, then I guess we don't need to go over these slides right now, or the parts of the budget presentation. But thank you for the idea.
Mary Lou?
Yeah, go ahead.
Can I make a suggestion that we maybe still try to divvy up ahead of time? So, we're coming in because this is, it's going to be similar probably to previous presentations, but different enough where, you know, we ought to try to at least have an idea, you know, instead of spending the first twenty, thirty minutes of figuring out who's going to do what.
Dividing up, okay.
Yeah.
We could even do that by email if you wanted to.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, with that? All right. Why don't you guys, if anybody has a strong desire, or if you could look through and let me know what sections you want to be and copy everyone on it, it's a pretty short presentation, which the public hearing is generally shorter, right?
But that's why I had a question, is because this seemed to be a lot shorter than some of the typical things. Like, in the past, we used to have somebody going through the revenues, somebody going through, you know, all the different items and things like that.
Well, the.
I didn't, but I didn't see that in here.
I think the revenue and default detail is usually deliberative, right, Steve?
Yeah, the public is just the proposed budget, really Article II only, just the proposed budget, and all the other stuff. The deliberate one gets way longer.
Maybe I've been away for those numbers.
Yeah, I think you put it out of your mind, I think.
Doesn't take much.
You didn't want to remember all those deliberative sessions?
I have no memory anymore, it's okay.
Um, yeah, but it is short, so I mean, we'll each have maybe two pages.
And remember, you have an hour for the whole thing, because there's the Amherst public hearing that's buttoned against you, so literally one hour.
Which isn't a bad thing.
There's only, what, eight, ten slides here?
I've added some, I mean, I gave you the.
Will they learn here?
Yeah, I've added some more as I've worked on it, including revenue projections and tax rate and those sort of things. And I'll send that to everybody after the fact.
Okay, when do you think you'll send that to us, just so we can email?
By Friday.
By Friday, okay.
I thought you were going to say before midnight.
That's what he usually does.
It's almost silly to have people assigned to different pieces of this thing, because it's so short, really. Don't you think?
Uh, well, there's going to be, it sounds like maybe thirteen pages, and do you, I mean, what are you suggesting, what would you rather?
Maybe one or two of us do the whole thing, rather than.
That's, that's fine.
You know?
I mean, we all should be there, obviously.
Yeah, 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 no, I'm not saying, well, maybe not, but. Just kidding, right there. I'm going to go look at you.
No, I, I thought, no, I, yes, I do want you there, but.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have to present if you don't want to.
I would like to make one request in this, because we made it a standard, it seems, before, and that is the cost per pupil, the cost per student calculation, because we've always touted that as, you know, where we're going.
And I have that, we have that updated number.
Okay.
We worked on that today, and I do have that. So, we can include that.
And the cost per pupil, or cost per student, for both the budget and the default budget, I think that's going to be a stunning kind of display here.
Well, we haven't actually always done that. That's only been a recent thing, frankly.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And it is, we have to keep in mind that that is one measure, so.
Sure, but it's one measure more than we have here, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, well, again, this isn't supposed to be a lot of detail, but, you know, we can talk about it with Adam on Monday, and he'll have the numbers for us either way. All right. Well, I guess actually, since it is shorter, if we're going to have one or two people present, I wouldn't mind presenting unless someone else is dying to present, and I'm feeling like Steve probably wouldn't mind presenting, just volunteering you.
Why would you get that feeling?
You've done it for so long and so well, Steve.
I vote for Steve. I.
Steve and Mary Lou.
I will take whatever part you, you or the rest of the board makes me take, whatever it is.
Does anyone else, does anyone else want to present at the public hearing? I think at the deliberative, we're all going to present part of it. Does anybody else want to present at the public hearing?
At the deliberative, this way we'll all get up.
Okay. All right, good. Then Steve and I will determine what parts we do after we get it from Adam. Okay.
So, the meeting then is just going to be with the four of you guys?
No. We need collective wisdom, so bring some.
Synergy is what it's about.
The default budget thing's going to be the big discussion.
We'll have you as a special guest lecturer.
At the deliberative. All right. Okay, so, no, I think we're all going to be there on Monday still. All right. Just to bounce ideas off, is that, are you okay with that, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, so, let's move on then to informational. We have the PS, BTS A update. It's not even nine yet, and I'm already stumbling over my words. Lisa, yeah?
So, just really quick, because now that life's changed, we did have a, I think I told you about an awesome presentation in November, it was fantastic, but what we have coming up, and I encourage everyone to go or buy tickets to support us, is our Eighties Night Scholarship fundraiser on Saturday, February fourth, at the Amherst Country Club, twenty-one years and older, twenty dollars per person, eight to twelve. It's a great time, we have wonderful raffle baskets, Maggie Boyer puts together some fantastic baskets, and we typically raise right at a thousand dollars, which is what we look for to award to five hundred dollar scholarships to seniors based on community service at awards night in May. So, I encourage everybody to go, or at least buy tickets if you can't go, to support us and support the scholarship fund.
And how much are the tickets, and where can people buy them?
Twenty bucks a person, and we have historically sold them at Molten's and the Homestead and here at the school.
At the school store?
No, in the office.
Okay.
Or Linda, Sally.
Okay. And they, or they can probably email you, or somebody, they, okay. Go ahead, Dwayne.
When is it again?
It is Saturday, February fourth, from eight PM to midnight.
Okay, all right.
So, everybody take a nap, and then you can stay up till midnight.
Wow, you must really think we're old.
Well, I know I do, but.
Usually they take naps at eight, I don't know.
I know, it is eight o'clock. So, you know. The only other thing I had to say as a parent outside of BTS A for public comments, can I?
Yeah.
Oh, I am so excited that my daughter is one of the kids going to the inauguration, and maybe you mentioned it, I had to step out and take a phone call. I would love it if in April, board meeting, like when things settle down, if to have some of the kids come and talk about their experience with the Grant State Social Media Foundation and the inauguration, because Adam Terry always just done such a fantastic job with the CLAW and supporting those kids, and the amount of where the CLAW used to be and where it is this year is absolutely unbelievable, and it's under his tutelage that these kids are just blossoming and expanding. And I hope that there's time somewhere that you all could hear the wonderful things he's doing.
I think it's a great idea. Actually, it would be a neat idea to have a portion of the meeting dedicated just to student night, where we have maybe ethics come, you know, we have the CLAW, we have, I don't know, robotics, whatever, and that would be a cool idea for part of our meeting. So, I put that down under our agenda, future agenda, agenda.
Wait, wait, I have a question. While you're there, because I know it's going to be brought up, I see that they're going to miss five days of school. As a parent, what are your thoughts?
It's a once-in-a-lifetime.
It is, and that's where I balance it out. Howard, I have to tell you, I mean, five days is a lot. I have a stu, my student who's going is a good student, and I know academically she can do it, but it's the precedent that's set. I mean, we had, everybody had this great big discussion of whether baseball players could miss two days, and now you've got five kids missing five days.
That's why I asked you that question, because that's going to be brought up, I know it's going to be brought up.
I know. It's, it's a lot. And again, though, I mean, they're getting it, when you look at the opportunities, they're doing this, they're going on tour of the Capitol Building, they're having special meetings with people in the industry, they're doing a college tour while they're there, you know, they're doing valuable things, like the college tour, they would be given that, that's an excused day anyway.
Which college?
What'd Sarah say? George Mason?
George Mason. Or George Washington.
George Washington, that's what it is, George Washington. It was one of the Georgias. So, but five days is a lot. And, you know, if I, if, and, well, Anna is also one of them, and so Anna, you can speak to this as well. If, you know, Sarah had a bunch of AP classes that were super hard, I would have to really, like, chick, you need to consider this. I mean, if she were a junior, she's a senior, so things are a little, she's in a little different position, but if this were her junior year, and, you know, coming up on AP testing and SAT testing and all of that in March, and that, it would be a huge consideration as a parent, for sure.
Yeah, but that's a parent's decision as opposed to a board decision.
Absolutely. I don't know if that's a, it would be a policy, but as a parent, which is what you were asking my opinion on.
Right.
If she were in a different year and in a different spot, particularly as a junior, I would have to really weigh that and really help her come up with a plan.
Yeah, and as a board.
And is now all seniors going?
No, it's all across the grades. Seth Fahey is one of them, he's a sophomore, Anna's a junior, Sarah and Sophie and Megana are all seniors, so, you know.
And we're going to be discussing those too, so.
Yeah, but anyway, so that's my view as a parent, but I hope that they'll have time to come in and.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea.
And, and again, I just want to throw out my support for Adam, because he has just put in so much time.
Yeah, it's kudos to him and the kids and the school and.
And then Eighties Night, go to Eighties Night.
And then, so, under informational, also update on the budget freeze.
Yes, so this will be very quick. The, I think we're going to be okay, is my short answer. You're, we're going to have an updated second quarter report coming up that just ended three days ago at the February meeting, excuse me, but I'm feeling more and more confident as time goes on that we're going to be okay. We have been approving more and more purchase orders that have been coming through for necessary items, so things are looking better, although I mentioned earlier an issue that will add some more pressure to it. Part of that is on the understanding that we're probably not going to be spending the money on the shed building that was in last year's budget. That's seventy-five thousand dollars, that helps things out quite a bit. So, I will have a very detailed update for, as part of the second quarter report next month, but we're looking better.
Okay. Is there anything we'll need to do anytime soon if we are going to use the expendable trust, especially the expendable trust to cover? No?
We can, because we have that available, we can do that up to June thirtieth if we need to, so, we're fine.
Great, thank you. All right, so that brings us to the field trips.
Mary Lou just.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
Sorry to interrupt. I just noticed, I don't know if I was supposed to include my principal's report, or I had a kind of memory of when we met to set the agenda and informational discussion, I have a little one-pager.
Oh, yeah.
On the point-five dean of faculty.
Oh, the responsibilities?
Yeah, because I was asked to just kind of give context to that, because we like to go forward with.
Okay.
I don't know if that could occur now, or you want to wait till after?
No, I think, I actually think it's a good idea to do it now, but seeing as though, you know, we're just seeing it, I think it would work well, not just because we're just seeing it, but time-wise too. Is it okay if people email you with any questions they have about it?
Yeah, I can send this out.
Oh, okay.
I have a. Yeah, I, we had electronic copy, we were able to just get some of the data recently, so, I don't know, I can pass this out hard copy now.
Yeah, that would help, but I think that Dwayne and Pete might have seen it already, or no?
No.
Oh, no, you meant about something else, okay.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that way it gives people a chance to look at it, and do you want to go over?
So, what Rob said here earlier.
Do you want to go over any highlights, or no, do you want to just do questions?
Well, it literally would probably take me three or four minutes to explain it, and I was, you know, hoping to be able to get in touch with a couple of folks that we have interest in and keep going, so if this next few minutes gives people enough info that they feel good.
Okay, I wasn't sure what you wanted to do, yeah.
Yeah.
Go ahead then, Rob.
So, on the one side, I just put our job posting edited a little bit just for formatting to fit on one side, but basically it's a point-five year-round position dean of faculty. The start date, we had, you know, December twenty-sixteen. There's a little summary of our school, the position overview, and I just want to draw your attention to the primary responsibility. What we did, going from a full position to the point-five position, we just made the primary responsibility instructional leader, instead of including a lot of the other responsibilities that you'll see on the other side. But basically, my objective in the next couple of minutes is just.
Don't rush, don't, I didn't mean to rush you, but I just didn't know what you were planning on doing with it, so.
But I feel badly that I did put it in the principal's report, or I thought it was going to be a little bit lower, but that's, I guess the point is, this, I just want to bring some context to why we originally put it in the budget as a full-time position, but heard some of the wonders and concerns, and knowing staffing is something that we have to address closely, the leadership group being willing to, you know, adjust accordingly while we're able to still offer programming. So, this side is just basically the job description, and I really just want to draw your attention to the idea that the primary responsibility would be the instructional leader, which is basically supervision and observation. So, that person would come in as, you know, almost a specialist in supervising teachers. On the other side, I'll just walk you through this to show you that we had seven leadership positions. Currently, we have five, so depending on where we move forward, we went from five, we went from seven to five. This doesn't include also the facilities director that is not technically an administrative position, but we've also assumed those responsibilities as well. So, if you look at this outline, basically, what I just wanted to give you is some of the, some of the data. Athletic director, guidance director, dean of students, dean of faculty, and principal. Underneath is the amount of people that person's responsible for supervising. So, the athletic director, one, for obvious reasons. Well, I, let me back up for a second. Didn't include the coaches, because pastime didn't have that number, but if you can imagine all the coaches in place of the teachers. So, athletic director, there's a primary responsibility, but not with the coaches number in there yet. number in there yet. Guidance director, there are seven people she's primarily responsible for supervising. Our dean of students has 24, dean of faculty currently has 50, and the principal has 32. Underneath, you'll notice it's broken into how many instructors and how many paras or support. So Karen has five teachers, two in the support para, dean of students, 18 teachers, and you see how it goes, dean of faculty, you know, 37 teachers, 13 para and support folks, and the principal has 27 teachers to supervise. And what does that mean? So that means our focus, as we've been talking about for years, is we want instructors that are the best instructors in the state, and we want the best curriculum that we can develop. So, all of us to varying degrees, but from guidance to principal, you know, 100% is around instruction. So what does that mean? That means we supervise and observe the amount of teachers and paras and support that you see above. And for certified staff, every year, there are three informals, and then those staff in continuing contract, there's one formal every three years. Non-continuing contract teachers in year one through three, they get two formal observations, and in years four and five, they get one observation. So if you kind of did the math, you know Kathy right now has 50 times three or four observations for all those folks, and an informal observation can be anywhere from hour to an hour and a half of total time, and a formal observation can be anywhere from five to six to seven to eight hours of time, considering the pre, during, post, the write-ups, the revisits. And so every one of us is primarily responsible for instruction, that means we supervise and observe and do the observation process, and that's how many people we're carrying right now. The red and the blue, obviously, are the folks that we've shifted, you know, those numbers from. We also have non-certified staff that we're responsible for, and PD Express means that we not only do supervision and observation, but we work with them, we're developing their professional growth plans, and every one of their professional development activities, we help and we're part of the vetting process and managing that in our PD Express. Also their attendance, we okay their absences, et cetera, for the certified staff. And the non-certified staff, their professional development, their attendance, and also new the last couple of years is Veritime. Hourly employees essentially punch in and out, and we have to manage that to make sure they're, you know, not working more than they should and making sure that they're ours.
Rob, how do they punch in and out?
They slide in and out of different kiosks.
It's a new system implemented last year, it's like a punch-in system, you know, or a slide-in.
So when I see staff members leaving at 2:00, they somehow punch out?
Hourly employees.
But not staff?
That was important.
Is that like monitoring an extra door that has the weather forecast on it? Sure the time clock?
No, really, I'm serious.
Really?
Yeah.
So the systems that we manage, stages, PD Express, Aesop and Veritime, all that are very necessary, but can also be very time-consuming. Also curriculum, all of us are responsible for developing a curriculum that, as I said, hopefully is unequalled in the state, and I just highlighted some of the larger, so basically, we're project managers of competency-based education, moving ourselves to that, the PACE, our Lit Institute, our STEAM Institute, assessment, regating and work-study practices. Those are all large initiatives that we're managing to develop our curriculum. So currently, there's five of us, primary responsibilities, instruction and curriculum, all, as I said, very exciting work, but very time-consuming, and every one of these things kind of has tentacles. The hard data, though, is when you're looking at, you know, 24, 50 or 32 folks with that many informals and formal observations, that led us to budgeting for another dean of faculty position, realizing with some feedback from folks that we could absorb some of the other things, but we definitely need somebody in that area. So down below, you'll see, hopefully, if you just follow it down, what you'll see is those other things that we're responsible for. So for example, the dean of faculty, you know, the curriculum work, Kathy works with the interns, our mentor program, our senior project, et cetera. So those are our, kind of our other responsibility buckets. And what I simply did was when we went down our director of special ed, we moved her responsibilities into our buckets, and then currently with down the dean of faculty, you'll see the blue and the red is just the additional things that we added to our buckets. So the job description's on the front and the context with some data on the back, and as I said, my objective just is to, you know, just hopefully qualify, validate, explain why we put this in the budget to begin with, and definitely why we think this year and for another year to at least go with that .5 position, that would just be this top half, and we'd absorb this.
Wow. I mean, I knew you had absorbed some responsibilities, but the amount of, in particular, the evaluations, which was something that was important to the board, Pete?
Question I was gonna ask was about the evaluations, and just trying to do quick math in my head, so I probably screwed it up royally, so be careful. But like, just looking at, like, the dean of faculty number, which has, you know, 50 people being responsible for. So there's three informal per year for them, so that's 150 hours for that, and even if one-third of them each, each year has to have the formal one.
We tried to balance that out, but I see where you're going.
So it'd be, you know, roughly 15 people a year, at five hours apiece, that's another 75 hours. So you're talking, you know, 300 hours total to do that part of the job. If you're working a 40-hour week over a 10-month period, yes, it's a lot, but if you spread it out, it doesn't sound like it's, it's, you know, roughly quarter-time of the job, which sounds about right. So that's why I struggle with, you know, do we really need somebody else?
That doesn't sound right to me. I don't know if there's any, yeah, I think that math has got to be wrong.
Do my math, yeah, I'll double check.
Well, that's, but that was where I was gonna go on. What does that equate to in hours? Having 50 people that you're doing these, because like I said, they're just from the way you described it.
Do you want to come up, Kathy? Or do, do?
No.
No, okay.
I think just saying, from span of control in an organization, how many people typically do you have a manager directly reports?
Can you listen to that? Can you talk to your wife about that?
It depends on the level of that, but...
That, Howard had talked with his wife about this, because she manages a lot of people, but doesn't have to evaluate them all, and she thought this was incredibly, and actually we didn't even have the 50 number, but whatever number it was he talked to her about, I remember because I happened to talk to her too, that she thought it was just crazy, not something you would have a manager do at a corporation, and I know we don't run this like a corporation, nor should we, but 50 people to evaluate, and that's something that the board has said is really important to us. I mean, it helps us in many different ways to have good evaluations, and let alone, and oh, by the way, we want them to make this a destination school and make sure our curriculum is great, and, you know, make sure every, you know, department is running as it should, and every budget is, you know, is, it should be, and all the other responsibilities that are down at the bottom here.
I'm not taking away from that, I understand all that, I'm just trying to understand the numbers. And like I said, if 50 is too much of one, why isn't it spread out a little bit? Why doesn't dean of students have a few more, and the dean of faculty a few less?
The dean of students, to some degree, also has 830 students to pay attention to, and maybe I'll go back to your straight math, the idea of...
You're gonna embarrass me.
No, 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 just the idea of, it's not a perfect science, teacher's schedules, when they can meet, and pre, during and post discussion isn't packaged neatly, it's a little bit more fluid than that, but I see kind of like the logic of, you know, the straight math of it, but I would, you know, tell you that right now, it's not sustainable. We won't be able to fulfill likely the observations that we want to do, and not for the check-the-box part, but for the building capacity in our instructors. It's, our current situation is not sustainable, we budgeted accordingly for a full-time because a little bit of what Mary Lou was alluding to, because if you look at each one of those buckets, items down below, that's a project onto itself, so we manage each one of those projects, and we also try to supervise, and I'm not trying to be flippant, and the phone rings in the morning, and then you are a day and a half into dealing with an attempted suicide, or you're two days into dealing with a harassment issue. So as, as much as I kind of brought the data here to give it, you know, some context, maybe I should have started more with the texturing, because it does this, doing this within the context of our daily operational, maintaining the mission and trying to be future-forward thinking, it's difficult with the current level of staffing.
Probably know what I would say and add in, but I would be honestly, honestly true, that if this number was 20, when I, when he, when Rob said 50, I didn't see the page, I hadn't seen it before.
Oh, you're outside.
No, it's okay, I just tried to pass it on, but to say that I'm flabbergasted is an understatement. 50 is way, way over what would be expected. If you went to other schools, progressive high schools in the state of New Hampshire or otherwise, other places, 50, I don't know of any school that's at 50, I think 25 would be a maximum for me. And I say that very honestly, because the business of running a school, you know, I almost like to liken it to if you're working at Market Basket and you're the manager, and you have 27 aisles to take care of, or 50 aisles, but you also have to check out people, and you have to unload the truck, and you have to take care of the carriages and do all that stuff, and then time runs out, so you're not working 40 hours a week, you're working about 80. I can honestly tell you, in my history of doing this work, I've never, ever, ever seen anyone do 50, because if they're doing 50, and I know Kathy will do them as best she can, we just had this conversation the other day as a leadership team, you know, sometimes with evaluations, less people is more, because you really can do a better job, get to know the person, develop a relationship and help them to grow as an instructor. The business of education, these numbers is just very different in some ways. I have nine, I, you know, that's, you know, it's hard to get to those some days because of all the other burdens that are on administrators today, not including mental health and social. I could go on and on and on, but I just really think that that is, again, flabbergasting. I looked at Kathy and the number went up, like, 50? No, so I just want to be honest about that.
Dave?
So, Peter, from your experience, how do big schools like Pinkerton, for example, or Nashville High, Nashville North-South, whatever, they only have one dean of faculty, right? But how do they disperse the load so that the 300 staff there gets...
I don't know if they have one dean of faculty. I don't know how many deans they would have, or you also have...
Model teams.
Yeah, you have department heads that are certified to do evaluations.
So are our department heads certified to do evaluations?
We don't use...
No, we don't use that one, and in some cases, collective bargaining agreement is, you know, won't allow it because it's a peer, seeing more of like a peer evaluation model. When I was at Legendary, our, our department heads was more of a conventional, department head had the department of 12 people or 14 people that they did, and then the principal would come in maybe once every three or four years to do.
So our PPC doesn't permit the use of department heads, is that...
Oh, we do, A, we don't have department heads.
Okay, all right.
B, the law prohibits it.
Okay.
We have to credential.
The law doesn't fly then?
Yeah, you, no, no.
We don't have department heads?
You gotta have administrators to, teachers can't, can't evaluate teachers, administrators must evaluate teachers.
I think Adam has something to add, too, that might help.
So we had this exact same issue in Wyndham four years ago. We said the converging things were, we had way too many evaluations for way too few administrators, and we saw that we had an additional concern with, it was difficult for us to provide content expertise to our teachers. In other words, our administrators had a difficult time helping our science teachers become better at teaching science, or even helping our elementary school teachers become better at teaching science if they themselves weren't a science teacher, had expertise in science. Same thing for social studies, English and math. And so what, what we did there to solve the problem was, we created more administrative positions that were directors in the specific content areas that did a couple of things. They provided some of the, took some of the evaluation load off of the administrators, and also did coaching for our teachers in the classroom, helping them become more proficient at delivering the content, and then in addition to that, they were responsible for the K-12 alignment of the curriculum to make sure that there was vertical alignment, that the way we were teaching it in first grade helps get us on track to the way we're trying to teach it by the time they graduate high school. And that was very, very successful. That's what Pinkerton does, Pinkerton has department heads, in the social studies department, there's a director of social studies that oversees and is the administrator for all of the teachers in the, in the social studies department. So that's, that's, that's what we did and found success.
Bethany would have been one of those.
Bethany Bernasconi was a director of science in the Wyndham School District when you hired her here, or when the Amherst School District hired her.
So how much, I mean, I'm assuming that added quite a bit to the budget, though?
Well, we also had those, those directors, we also had them teach one or two classes a day as well.
Oh, okay.
So they were still tied into the classroom and had that crossover, which gave them some street cred with the teachers a little bit as well, because, but also lowered the cost.
Huh.
Definitely investment, but we, we saw results. We saw that our, our other teachers became more effective in teaching their content areas, because there's more one-on-one attention, more coaching and more direct content-specific coaching, and the quality of evaluations rose, because they're more in-depth and were done by people who are not also dealing with other issues.
Administrative issues and other. And I'm just curious, I mean, is this a good idea going forward, but they were full-time people, full-time people in each department that had evaluation responsibility and teaching responsibility?
Yeah, and we, we ended up lowering their teaching duties over time, because we found that their work was so effective in, outside of the classroom, that it became a good investment for us there. And frankly, we stole the, it wasn't our idea, we stole it from Bedford, and Hanover does something similar as well, so.
All right, so we're asking for a halftime person to do all that. Kathy?
Well, I just would say that sometimes I would also want to comment that we've implemented the evaluation, supervision evaluation program, it was thought we considered by all stakeholders within the SOU, we're trying to implement that with fidelity, and I think that we're seeing results from it. So teachers have been observed more often than in any of the history of our 25 years here, and I think that, you know, just if you're a great teacher and you've never been a teacher on a regular basis, it's a wonderful thing to have feedback on you that you're great. And if you're a new teacher and you get that support because you've been seeing how frequently that's been working and you see results from that best of the time. So my only concern with, oh my gosh, when we're looking at personnel in this program, is I wouldn't want to judge them of, well, let's just, and how many of our operations goes to, you know, because it was implemented for a reason, and we're seeing the results.
Well, and the board was one of those stakeholders that was fully behind it, so I don't think that we want to take that support away now either, in my opinion, but that's my opinion. So I think that, you know, Rob, you said you were hoping for a vote on this tonight, because we've been kind of stalling this, and you've interviewed or started to the interview process, then stalled it?
Or, I guess it's okay to go forward, because originally, if Gigi had left, we'd have a full-time, and it wouldn't have been a, it wouldn't have been an issue, and we would have kept looking at it. So maybe, you know, I don't know, however you want to handle it, a vote, or, you know, you've heard enough and a blessing, but we have luckily two folks who, when we put it out as a part-time, with this as the primary responsibility, it appealed to these two particular folks who we're actually pretty excited about, for what we talked about, having to shift at such a last minute.
Right.
Like that, you know, we were able to get a couple candidates.
Dave?
Rob, do they, do these two folks, are they, will they be part-time, will they be eligible for benefits? How does that work?
Generally, they're, generally part-time people, if they're under 32 hours, they don't get New Hampshire retirement.
Okay.
But they're usually eligible for 50% of the value, whatever FTE rate they are that we get for health and dental and so on and so forth. So in other words, if we pay, normally pay, I forget the percentages, but if we normally pay 90% of their health, if they're half-time, then we pay 45%, and they'd be responsible for the other 55%.
So there's a number in your deltas, in your spreadsheet, in your, and I don't remember the exact number, but it's, like Peter, you know, it's 47,000 something and change, that obviously does not include a benefits package at all, correct? Any kind, must not.
No, it does, I think...
Oh, it does?
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, includes what they would be eligible for at a half-time basis, right?
Correct.
So does anyone want, Steve?
Please make a motion.
Oh, you read my mind, you read my mind, no, that's great.
So I will authorize the, the highest, as soon as possible, of a half-time dean's faculty.
Okay. Sutkins?
Just...
Well, we can discuss after, but I just want to see if there's a Sutkins?
No Sutkins.
Pim Sutkins? Pete?
Questions I had, by doing that, I'm assuming since Gigi was already in the budget, that doesn't affect anything we heard before about the freeze on the budget, that's, that's not going to change the outlook going forward if we had this?
No, no, we assumed that we were spending the other half of these funds, yeah.
That was, that was, that was done after, still including that assumption. By doing this, does that impact anything? By doing this, does that impact anything that we have to do in the budget that gets proposed?
No. No, we have the half-time position budgeted.
It was already...
Yeah.
Steve?
So, I haven't talked about this yet, so I feel like I should talk. Certainly, A, I certainly would be okay with hiring a full-time person as well. We started with one dean of faculty, we went to two somewhere in the distant past, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess, and maybe Rob remembers, probably around a six...
We just went over that, yeah, we went over that today.
What was the student population?
We started with two.
We started with two?
Yeah.
It was math, science, technology, and then it was...
Just second, Dwayne.
I think he just called back in. I think he...
Yes, returning.
So, but it went to one, and then it came back to two again.
I think we started with two.
Yeah, so it started, so it's Dan Masario, math, science, technology, and then Allison Rao, where the, is the original humanities.
Yeah.
So that's how, that's how it started.
We were five hundred and sixty students, and I don't know, were we sixty teachers, eighty staff, something?
I definitely remember it being a wonderful one, and then it bounced back to two because of stress on the administrators.
Yeah, I think it went to one or one and a half. It might, it might have, I think, oh, I know what happened. There was a time, if I recall correctly, that Dan went back teaching, so the math, science, technology person went back teaching. Humanities became dean of faculty, and at that time, they tried the department coordinator doing the observations. But because of how we, again, going back to all those reasons, because of the way we're structured, that, that didn't necessarily work. Because our department coordinators are voted, our department coordinators teach full-time, so there's not that time within that structure, and they're not necessarily, don't have that background in training or certification. So, you know, we could move to a different system, but it would take some time to implement that. And then you have to look at, and it might be the best system to go to, but it would still have implications in terms of staffing, ultimately.
Okay, so...
And so then it went back to two deans of faculty.
So I was gonna say that there's, there was, my thought was, there's some breakpoint in the number of students where two becomes necessary, but you're saying is, and our model two is always necessary, you tried it without them for a while, it didn't work so well.
And I think the thing that I wasn't very articulate about when Peter was asking doing the numbers, because I did that with Rob, I said, this is the question you're gonna get, okay? Why doesn't that one take more? And why doesn't, because, you know, that's what you do, you look at the numbers. But I think when I talk about span and control, so it's X number of hours for the observations, there's also the post, the PGP plans, so we have a post-grad plan, we keep calling it the post-grad plan when it's the professional growth plan, and that's new with the system as opposed to, we always had plans, but this is a little bit different. It's a nice format, takes a little bit longer, we're implementing it for the first time, so that, that lag time through the system are overlapping, so there's lots of additional meetings for that, to get that through. And then you also have all of the, every other little item that goes along with interfacing with people, so it's their professional development request, going back and reading their reflections on their professional development activities.
Certification cycle.
Certification cycle, getting their transcripts in order, so it's, it's observation, but then maybe another two, I don't know, I could go back and figure it out, how many hours, you know, you might be doubling those hours. But then, if you're doing that, it's the intermediate, the immediate day-to-day of X number of people are sick, helping out with the sub-line, and then trying to get to all the project management. So it's, it's just balancing all of that. I've only started to wear regular shoes again, I think I'm going back to my sneakers.
I just, I didn't mean to come out that I was...
Oh, no, no.
I was, I just do everything, you know, by notice, and I was anticipating those same questions, too, so if you're hearing the explanations, I...
Yep, no, no, and, and they're valid questions, and, you know, I ran Rob through them ahead of time, not kidding.
I just want to say also, I can continue. Back when I managed people, we all sat in cubicles, it was just part of the job, and to have eight hundred students and sixteen hundred parents who distract me from my work when I have to do supervision and evaluation, and so it's a very different world here in the school, that is, with the others.
And it's all wonderful, it's wonderful. I mean, we're doing some of the most exciting work, and, you know, I started here twenty-five years ago, and it was exciting, and I would say that we're at parallel with that, with what we're doing right now. So it's, it's all very exciting. But lots of projects.
Rob, sort of, Kathy and Rob, I'm sort of curious about how time management is gonna work on this. You know, it's a half-time position, and I could assume that half-time means seven thirty in the morning until eleven, or whatever the half-time day is. But then meetings occur all, all during the day, this, I mean, you know, this is a school, they're inconsistent in when you do them, and sometimes they're after three o'clock, and sometimes they're at six in the morning or something like that. How does, how is this all gonna work out? I mean, so, the, the other part of my question is, is this gonna be a situation where there's incrementalism, and basically, next year you're gonna come back and say it has to be full-time?
I think...
Okay, I wanted to leave you that, and then work backwards for me.
Yeah, I think, right now, where we're at is, making this move to part-time, you know, the condition I'd like to, you know, agree to, it's definitely for the rest of this year and next year, because we think we'll have similar, there'll be similar variables, similar contexts. So that's not the plan, is to inch it back up. And either direction it goes, it's coming to the board anyway.
Well, how are we gonna do that, it's sort of, I just feel like there's gonna be a time management problem here.
That, I think, oh, so the second part of the, or the other part of the question is, we would, we don't perceive it as, you know, the seven thirty to eleven, and then you go home.
Yeah, right.
Total hours, who are, who's on your observation list, when are they teaching? In a weird way, it might be able to target it a little bit easier, where, here's my list, teaching third period, I'm coming in from this chunk of time on this day, Wednesday it'll be this amount of time, but that would just be, and, and we've had a chance to speak with one of the folks, as we shared, you know, we're gonna probably meet in, hopefully meet in January, and had some of those discussions, and that's part of the appeal, is both of them have that kind of flexibility, they're coming from well-established places that are hoping to get back into the, a school of brick and mortar building.
Not to cut you off, but I, I think really, our job is to, you know, he's brought, Rob has brought the information that we asked for, to see what the responsibilities were for the position, and our job is to decide whether we okay the position. I mean, frankly, it's Rob's job to manage, you know, how their time and their day goes, so...
Well, I think it's a valid question, because, you know...
Oh, I think it's a valid question, too, but I, but I think that how that part-time position is managed, you know, Rob has to handle, you know, because if he's, you know, wants his half-time person to do evaluations, right, he's gonna have to handle it so that this person does the evaluations and picks up that slack, so I'm comfortable letting Rob, you know, figure out how to schedule the person. Not that it's not a valid question, but I think we just need to decide whether we're okay, and think that it's a necessary position.
I guess my report is, is I am concerned about whether it is incrementalism or not, you know, and you don't have to answer it today, you don't have to answer it ever, actually.
You know what?
But, but...
No, 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 Dave, I'm not, no, no, what I was gonna say was, it, and I think Rob was alluding to this, it's gonna come back to the board next year when you do the budget, right? When we, when the board does the budget next year, it's automatically gonna come back, you know, and so if he comes back next year and says, I want a point seven five, you can say, I told you so.
And then Kathy will say what David says. I told you so.
I'll save it for two.
Yeah, it's not the plan, David.
All right, all right.
And I know you're not trying to, you know, cast out, it's not the plan. In fact, we put it in for a full, reading, you know, the room a little bit, and, you know, some projections, happy to absorb, well, willing to, willing to absorb.
Let me just say it this way, I see the danger that it's gonna be incrementalism if not planned very well, or some guidelines are not established really well, and it, it just may not work. And then you would be coming back to us for, you know...
Yeah, but you have the opportunity, and by the way, I think you could go home and DVR this, and you can say, look, Rob, last year you said that's not what was gonna happen. It's gonna be on TV, DVR and hold them to it, Dave.
These meetings are too large to fit on my disk drive.
All right, that being said, let's move on. Does anybody want to make a motion?
Motion, motions are...
Oh, sorry, see, I'm losing track now, okay, the motion's on the table.
I, I, I did want to say something.
Okay, go ahead.
I guess my one concern is, still the same concern. Are you there?
Yep. Can you hear us?
Is, yeah, I can hear you. The concern, again, is that our enrollments are going down, and, and only, aren't the default going up, but the budget also is going up. And we have a model that does not allow the department heads or the coordinators to evaluate, and that now creates the need for this position.
I'm not sure if that's...
No, this actually is a reduction. This, we are actually reducing this position, not adding.
Did you hear, Rob?
No.
He said this is actually a reduction, not an addition. But your, but your point is duly noted, and, and anyone else have any questions or points? All right, so I think we'll do roll call again. The motion that Steve made, and Howard, or Pim seconded, sorry, was to move forward with the hiring of this point five position. So we'll do a roll call. Dwayne? Abstain, okay. Steve?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Mary Lou, yes? Pim?
Sure.
Okay. So you got that denied? Okay.
I mean, yes.
All right, okay, well, thank you guys, and thank, you know, thanks for the points that are brought up, too. So I believe that brings us to action items. Pete is chomping at the bit to come and talk to us about it.
We're gonna move up that.
Yes, yep, but that goes with the field trips, too.
Right, we can do that first, and get that out of the way.
Oh, okay.
So our new year's resolution is to go green, so I just printed them up.
All right.
Because they were, yes, right, so they're, hopefully everyone has access to them electronically.
Yeah. Oh, and also, we're gonna go to the late start, too, just a quick update on the late start, yeah.
Would you like me to start with that?
Yeah.
Yep, that's an easy one. So we made a request to bump a previously scheduled Sauhegan-only late start in the month of May, which is specifically designed for senior project panels to meet. It's kind of the last gateway to, yes, you can present during the celebration opportunity for the whole school event, but with June second being our graduation date, wow, that has created a bit of a logjam at the end of our year. So previously, in years past, for graduation, maybe around June tenth, you would have your, the celebrations, you know, kind of the last Thursday, Friday of May. But we can't do that this year, because that would mean that students would only have the Memorial Day weekend to, if they didn't pass, to try to get it to a pass, and they would only have like a day or two to get that done before the graduation. So we wanted to push the celebration dates to an earlier date, so instead of the last week of May, those celebration days have been adjusted already to the eighteenth and nineteenth, so the second to last Thursday and Friday of the month of, of month of May. Accordingly, we then had to adjust the Sauhegan-only late start day, because now that would have created a, too tight of a window to get that final approval, and have students design their presentations, practice them, and be ready to present. So we're looking to move the May fifteenth Sauhegan-only late start day to May fourth. And we specifically targeted that day, we've avoided moving it earlier in the past because that's when AP testing is going on, but we specifically targeted the date of May fourth as a date where it doesn't overlap with tests that we are anticipating students to be signing up for. So that's why that particular date was targeted.
Great, thanks for putting that thought into it, and I think, just to be consistent, we usually vote in calendars, so why don't we just have a quick vote on that, unless anybody has any questions or discussion for Pete? No? Pim, you wanted to make a motion?
Yeah, sure. I would move the late start from the fifteenth of May to the fourth.
Fifteenth to the fourth, that is correct.
Okay. Anyone want a second? Howard, seconds? All right, any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call. Dwayne? Steve?
Sure.
You love to quote him. Dave?
Of course.
There you go. Steve with yes.
Yes.
Mary Lou, yes?
Affirmative.
Oh.
Very good.
All right, thanks. Now we'll move on to the field trips.
All right, so we have three this evening, as previously mentioned earlier by Lisa Eastland. The, the five students who have been working diligently this past year on a, initially sort of a competition, you know, well-spirited out of, I believe Franklin Pierce University, and a group known as the Grand State Student Voice Association, trying to inspire students to, you know, cover the, the political campaigns that were taking place in the state, and the big prize at the end would be the opportunity to cover the inauguration. So, as previously mentioned, there's wonderful opportunities throughout this trip. I know we'd thrown around five days missed, I believe it's four days missed. So Tuesday through Friday, those five students would have, and I agree with what was previously said, a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, where they pursued this as a group, you know, with their high school, certainly they could cover future inaugurations, I wouldn't be shocked if Anna was down there in twenty twenty-four covering, you know, inaugurations moving forward, but this would be a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity that they've earned through the, the work and development that they've done with our online digital magazine that has grown in leaps and bounds over the last year and a half or so, the, the SHS Club. If you haven't been checking it out, I encourage you to, it's, it's really well done.
Great, it's awesome.
So, great opportunity, and the, it is a regimented schedule, so they're traveling down with other students from other schools. So, along with Adam Theryll, who would be the, you know, our chaperone, you know, meets the student body ratio, he's not scheduled for any other extended trips. The big, you know, the hang-up or the concern would be the amount of time missed out of class, so those four days, it would be the student's responsibility to make that time up once they returned.
Questions coming, Dave?
So when we initially discussed this about baseball, the, the concern that I had was that, it was not the two days in particular, it was, if we could establish some sort of a policy or a practice, you know, saying that there is, the PIM's analogy was paid time off, PTO, you know, and as I recall, we asked you to come back and give us some suggestions about what we could do or what we should do, and I don't remember if anything was brought back or not, or...
It hasn't been dropped. We decided, when we met as an agenda-setting team, to put it, because of everything going on right now with the budget and our long meetings, that, to put it on a future agenda. We didn't feel it was gonna really, you know, impact anything too much, just to put it off a little bit. So that was a decision we made when we saw the long agendas for the previous, but I think we have it on April's agenda, I don't remember exactly, Dave, I could let you know, but it hasn't fallen through the cracks.
I'm just saying that we had that discussion, and that we were hoping to get some guidance here, from, from your perspective, but so...
And if I can jump in for a second, my, I'm happy to develop it, and we'll put a lot of great thought into it, my, my only wonder is that it's gonna feel a bit arbitrary when each trip is so unique.
Right.
It'd be hard for me to say, well, going to the Pentagon and Capitol and Museum, and interviewing New Hampshire delegates, like, that qualifies, like, it would be like, it would be very difficult for us to say exactly what counts, I think, as a, you know, paid, the paid time off, or that it's equivalent to the...
Don't use those terms, those are PIM's terms, I wanted to drop that quickly.
So, that's my, my wonder.
And we talked about that, too, and, and that might be it just is, is the discussion, you know, with you at a board meeting, as opposed to you coming with guidelines, because we discussed that also, that, you know, obviously, it is a case-by-case basis, because, you know, we might not feel for a baseball field trip, they should miss three or four days, but we might think for inauguration, they might, you know, that that's an okay thing. So, you know, that, it sounds like it's more of a discussion at this point in April or whatever, than, than Pete coming with guidelines, because you might have some ideas for Pete that he might not think of, but it is still on a future agenda item.
And like I said, happy to put some, you know, some thought into that.
Yeah.
And bring it to the board.
Pete?
The thing running around was the, the opposite of that, like I said, because there is no policy, I, I fully understand why this is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, we can't say no to it. But what precedent does that set when, you know, if next month the baseball team wants But what precedent does that set when, you know, if next month the baseball team wants to come back and say, okay, you know, we have a trip that's gonna need three days off, and we're gonna have to say no. But they're gonna say, well, but you just approved four days for them. That's what I worry about. How do you deal with that?
Well, we've, we've dealt with that in the past. I mean, it's, it's unfortunately, it's falls on us, you know, it's a case by case basis and what we, you know, how, how we interpret each case, you know?
Like I said, I, I understand it. I, I know where we're going with it, but-
I believe you.
What?
I believe there needs to be some, you know, a little bit of informity. Um, because now we're deciding for baseball players that your need, although that may be a once in a lifetime opportunity, and I believe it is for those particular students. And you never know, you might have that one student as a hall of famer. Uh, but, but this board decides that's not that important. And missing school and all the disruption that it causes, um, is, is, is just not acceptable. But again, Washington DC is there, inauguration comes in four years. Uh, I'd be okay if there were a two-day event. But, um, the university is there to be visited at any time. The Capitol is there to be visited, these places don't go away. They're gonna be there to be visited at any time. Now, it's apparently, um, I, I, I'm just not convinced of the fairness that the same standard that was used, I'll now use different standards for different brush, uh, the same standard that was used, uh, for the baseball team is, is out the window. And I get a different standard. I think there's too much time here in the same arguments that applied prior. The disruption in class, our schedules and routine and so forth, I think it applies here also.
Well, I guess I, I want to respond to that only because I've been on the board all through these changes with Pete Gagnon since he's been Dean of Students. And I feel like the board, as well as Pete, has done a really good job of revising the field trip form, you know, so that we have as much information as possible. And I don't think it's as arbitrary as it really sounds because I think we all, you know, we each have a vote and I think we all take into consideration the educational benefits of these trips. We take into consideration the number of days missed, the number of teachers that are missing school, and the number of students that are missing school, among other things. I'm sure there are things, you know, that other board members consider that I don't. So I really do think it's a case by case basis. And I don't think it, it means, as you said, Dwayne, that we think the baseball trip is unimportant. I just think that we all have to decide whether we thinks it's as good of an educational opportunity as, say, going, going to inauguration is. And we all might have different opinions on that, but that's why we have votes.
And, uh, just point of information that I think is important. This trip is being coordinated, uh, by Franklin Pierce University. It's no cost to the students and it's on their schedule. So for us to be creating an alternative timeline, uh, that really throws the whole no-cost aspect of this out, out of the window, I think.
That's a good point, because cost has always been a consideration also.
Okay, so then, if it's being coordinated by Franklin Pierce University, why is our board having to be concerned about it? This is really an issue of the parents to decide. Why are we even involved in?
Because anytime our students go out of the New England area, the board has to approve it. That's our policy.
Now, now, if a parent chooses to send their child on this, you have nothing to say about it. I've taken my children to the last two inaugurations, uh, and we only miss one day out of school.
I think where this, I think where this-
My, my point is, this would be the decision for the parents to make. Why are we weighing in on this?
I think why we're weighing in on this, uh, Dwayne, is in the research that we've done throughout the, the past three plus years now of trying to determine, okay, when is it a field trip? When is it not? Well, when it's something that was originated by a school club and an opportunity that presented itself from the efforts of that school club, and that group is traveling down with one of our faculty members as chaperone, it, it, I mean, we could say that the parents could, could, you know, disco, you know, dismiss their students, but we're, we're still, that's still part of our organizational experience.
Any other questions for Pete?
And liability.
And in the liability discussions, I think what we've come to determine is that the school board is not liable necessarily for what takes place on these trips. The, the liabilities and the, I'm gonna forget the term right now. What's the, uh, the exposure, if you will? Is if there is negligence demonstrated by a chaperone on a trip, which is why we ask questions around experience, uh, on previous trips in order to gain an understanding of whether or not we feel comfortable sending, uh, our students out of the New England area with our, with our faculty members.
Go ahead. Howard?
The thing that comes to my mind, it, it's a great opportunity and I think they'll have a lot of fun and I think they'll get to see a lot of things. There's a couple of things that are happening down there at the same time. They're doing a million-person, uh, march onto Washington. So that's gonna be really chaotic. Safety-wise, uh, it's gonna be just impossible to make it, make sure everything is secure. Uh, so those things come to my mind, but it is an opportunity that I, I wouldn't want any kid to miss.
Plus the college program.
Plus the college program.
Yeah.
Just to, to address some of the safety, they do have press passes, so where they will be on the day is going to be in a secure area. They go through security and everything beforehand and every, so they'll, they won't be, you know, amongst all of those people. And they're trying to get some, for a couple of people to actually be on the steps. So they will be in a more secure environment than, like, just on the lawn.
That depends. I mean, if, if somebody, something is gonna happen right there-
Right.
You know, then they're in harm's way.
Right.
If it's gonna happen over here, then maybe they're gonna be safe.
Then it's a watering moment.
Right.
You know, but-
But given the options of going or not going, I'd say, you know, it's the same thing as going over to France. We had the same discussion, you know? Given that option, you don't want to have the kids set at home and not do it because you're scared that they're gonna run into some kind of a problem. So, like I said, given the, the, the difference between the two, I would say, yeah, let them go.
Dave, did you have, oh, sorry, Steve?
I'm moved to approve the, the Washington trip for the college participants.
Pim seconds? Any further discussion or questions? Dave?
Um, just reminding you, there is a parental liability waiver, is that correct?
Yep, so parent permission forms are signed off on. Uh, but like I said, if there was negligence demonstrated by a chaperone on a trip, there'd be exposure for that chaperone.
But not for the-
But not for the school board.
All right, any further questions or discussion? All right, we'll do a roll call. Dwayne?
Abstain.
Abstain, okay. Steve?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Mary Lou, yes. Pim?
Aye.
All right, so you got that, Danae? Okay. And next one, Pete?
So Arizona, April break. Uh, this is a trip that is being coordinated by two faculty members and actually an alumni. So we have an alumni who is, um, almost completed their outdoor education. And has been coordinating with two faculty members that I consider to be experienced in terms of taking students on trips, including one chaperone who's taken students to Peru, another chaperone who's taken students off into the wilderness of Maine. So it's perhaps a bit unique to be working with someone who is an alumni, maybe a non-faculty member, uh, but not totally unique in that during winter sessions, uh, there's often, uh, some additional, uh, expert to help with some of these more technical experiences. And this would be considered a technical experience. Um, and actually, I'm, I'm happy to have this person included because of their experience and expertise in that particular, uh, part of the, of the country. So it's the superstition wilderness, uh, out in Arizona. And this would be an opportunity for students, um, to spend their April break, um, you know, having a, you know, not necessarily once in a lifetime, because they could do it at any time, but, uh, where it's not impacting class time. Great opportunity for students to have a real-world experience out in the wild with folks that are wilderness certified, first aid responders, CPR trained. Um, reasonable cost, I feel like, at a thousand dollars. And, uh, no out-of-class time, no missed class time for teachers. Um, I, I would recommend approval of this trip based on the, those types of parameters. And the one recommendation that I would make is that what we do with any, uh, any person who's included on a trip like this in the role of a chaperone is that they would be, they would, uh, go through a, a background check. The same type of background check that we expect, uh, other chaperones when they're taking students out of the state.
Yup, I think that would be a stipulation of the motion to. Pete, you have a question?
Question, I understand all that, that it's, you know, not missing any class time, but, you know, I thought we asked a while ago to have all the trips, you know, like, these things like a year in advance. Or even looking at them all at once so people could plan throughout the year. What, what prompted this to come up, you know, this is three months from now?
Yep, so it's-
Why, why is it so late in the process?
Uh, I was first contacted about this less than, well, about a month ago, I would say, about a month ago. And I provided some recommendations to folks that had brought the, uh, the interest to me. This person, it can, sort of, uh, part of the conclusion of their, um, educational experience is that this is something that they're working towards in terms of a career path. So to-
So they, they may not necessarily be there next year to, to do some spending work in somewhere else.
Correct, so this person would be wrapping up their education. Um, this is part of like a culminating perhaps activity for them through that education. So that's why it presented itself at that time. Uh, and believe me, I would love to have everyone knock at my door on, uh, on one day, but, uh, that's just not the nature of field trips. Opportunities arise like the inauguration or, or this particular trip where an alumni reaches out to us and, and wants to work with our faculty members. So they do sort of, they, they bubble up, they don't, I can't necessarily all call, so.
So this is not anything related to winter session? This-
No, it is not related to winter session.
And the nine students that are, who are gonna go, are they all four grades?
So it would be opened up as any field trip would be sort of first come, first served until you hit that, that threshold that they felt comfortable with in terms of taking out into the wilderness. Um, so the first nine students, I mean, you can never, you can't, uh, you can't say this student or that student. It has to be just sort of an all-call and whoever expresses interest in the, the first group that does so, um, has that opportunity.
Other questions or comments? All right, seeing none.
I think it's a great opportunity. I am probably right now thirty miles, uh, just west of the superstition rooms. But I'll be abstaining again because I just don't believe that, uh, we should be engaged in making this decision when it is not during any kind, any kind of class time.
Okay.
I, I have a problem with that, Dwayne. You're being a hypocrite if you said you've taken your, your children down for the inauguration the last two years, the last two times, but now you're against having an educational, uh, field trip?
I'm not against it. I'm not against it. I am not against it at all. I didn't come to the school board and ask. I let teachers know that we would be going for this particular reason. But I, I, what I'm saying is, it is not during class time. And what people choose to do during that time is fine. Us weighing in on it, and I understand, you know, this discussion of whether I'm reliable or not. I don't want to end up in court to make that determination, so there could be an issue. So, you know, I appreciate, uh, that it may appear to be some confusion on my part, but I've been consistent on this, uh, when it came up again about a summertime trip, that, uh-
I'll concede that.
The only relationship is that it is because the, uh, the idea originally that that school took therefore, uh, we should weigh in on it. I, I'm just not comfortable, uh, telling, deciding for parents, uh, yea or nay.
All right, any other comments or questions? Um, and I believe we do have a motion on the table, or don't we? Because I'm losing track. Oh, Danae tells me no, so I trust her. All right, so does anybody want to make a motion? Okay, it's a girl thing. Pim? Okay, any seconds? Howard seconds? All right, any further con, discussion? Seeing none, we'll do roll call. Dwayne? You're abstaining, okay. Uh, Steve?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Mary Lou, yes. Pim?
Get over there.
How many different ways can you say yes?
I can't wait for the next vote.
I know. All right, um, and I think there's one more?
Yep, one more. So, Germany!
Pete, you're gonna be a game show host.
I know, someday, that's why. It's one of my goals. Uh, so, I get to host the forums tomorrow, help. Uh, so Germany, July 2017. Uh, this one is a traditional trip that's been offered by, um, some different faculty members in the past. We're working with one of our former faculty members on this trip in terms of coordination that's now at Nashua North. So, um, this is a, an opportunity that we've approved in the past. It's no out-of-class time, it's in July. Um, if you had a chance to look through the itinerary, it's one that makes me jealous.
Makes me.
So, uh, if you have any questions, I certainly welcome them, but this is something, once again, that I would recommend an approval of based on our previous. Uh, you know, it works for the company that has a, a good safety record. There are home stays involved, but there's a vetting process. Um, and there's, uh, this is a, a company that we've worked with in the past and have had success with. I mean, I've not had issue with this group.
Questions, comments?
Ed, Akira, is, are we still taking the German students in? So are these going to those, like in the past, a lot of times it was going to those same family?
Potentially, I can't guarantee that that's exactly what's happening, but, uh, we did host, uh, the Germans back in October. That's, uh, the traditional time of year they like to come, and I don't blame them. It's a beautiful time to be in New England. And, uh, yeah, they had a wonderful time. And we got to work with them and they were in our school, in our homes, and, uh, it's just a great relationship that we've continued to maintain, even though we don't continue to offer the German program.
Right.
I still remember having one of those kids in our house on Halloween and they'd tell him, you just call, knock on the door and they give you, what? Really? He couldn't believe it.
A little culture shock.
All right, does anybody want to make a motion on this trip? Pim?
A motion, I'll allow the trip to German.
Pete seconds, I'll give you a second last time. Any further discussion or questions? All right, we'll do roll call. Oh, yeah.
A year ago, we had a discussion about the Spanish trip and kids staying in houses and unable to supervise or, not supervise, isn't the right word, uh, unable to validate?
Vet them.
Yes, so where that, where that fell down a bit, I think, was within the discussion, the person who was coordinating the vetting process, it wasn't a company that had a track record of, of safety and relationships. It was a, a, a family member who lived in country.
Yeah, 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 right.
So not, I think the board at the time, different board, felt more comfortable working with a company that's, that's in-country, uh, has a more sophisticated perhaps vetting process than, oh, I'm friendly with or I know so-and-so. But, uh, once again, I've never been, you know, immersed or in a homestay experience, but I would imagine that that's, uh, truly a unique experience to be exposed to other cultures. As you mentioned, you know, the experience of them coming over and, and going over and knocking on doors for Halloween. You don't get that same experience traveling hotel to hotel.
Yeah.
So.
Well, we were advised legally not to have our students stay in homes that weren't vetted, so that was why. So, yeah.
So, this is different because?
Because of the relationship that, so this isn't necessarily just South Hegan's trip. This is South Hegan working with Carousel Travel, uh, you know, a company with that historical track record of safety and, uh, these, you know-
And they're responsible for doing the vetting in-country?
Correct.
Okay.
All right, we'll do roll call then. Dwayne?
Abstain.
Yeah. Well, I, I have to ask. Steve?
Yeah.
Dave?
Sure.
Pete?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes, I did.
Mary Lou, yes?
I will provide a positive response.
All right, that was, that was good. All right. All right, thank you very much, Pete. And again, thank you for all your work on getting this form and all of the field trips organized like you have.
Thank you for approving our 50% Dean of Bethany. It will be well-received and, uh, and appreciated by us, so thank you.
Oh, yeah, I'm only sorry we didn't do it sooner, um, for you guys. So we have a, a number of policies. I, I would like to suggest that, I'm assuming you've all read the, um, first one, two, three, four, five that are first readings. We don't have to have a second reading to vote on them. Um, so if anyone has suggestions for any of the first five, we can make them. Otherwise, let's just consider this a first reading and move on to the second readings. Any s- Any suggestions for changes for any of the first five policies, BA, BEA, BG, BGD, or BHE?
I believe these were all-
Do you want to vote on that now?
No, these are first readings, so unless you have a suggestion for a change, I think we'll wait till next month. Okay, so seeing none, let's go on to the second readings, we'll start with ADB, does anyone have any questions on that? Now, again, these were all already brought to the SAU, and were they brought to our board last month?
These were-
These second readings, okay, okay. So, they've been brought to the SAU and to each individual board, including our board, last month, so, um, they've been pretty vetted also. But if anyone has any questions or suggestions, we'll go one by one, ADB. Okay, if not, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to accept ADB.
Okay.
As a working policy.
All right, Pim, seconds. We'll go roll call, Dwayne? Steve?
Oh, yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Pete?
Can I just ask a question, I'm just, I'm scanning through this again as we go through this, and I'm looking like, you know, you have established grounds for disciplinary action, and you list four things. Does that cover every instance that can come up under here?
Uh, I know, I was looking for Pete Gaggen. I don't-
Because that's, that's the only thing, is, is there anything else, like, that, that seems to be very restrict, you know, you do one of these four things, and then you get in trouble, but then there could be a million other things that they could do that-
Steve?
So, this is an employee policy, not a student policy?
No, I, I, I understand.
That's what I was, Pete's probably not the right person.
Oh, yes.
He's wondering if this is broad enough.
I'm just saying, should there be some other wording there to say, you know, like this?
Did you guys discuss that at the policy committee? Whether it was broad enough, I mean?
I don't believe so, I don't believe, anybody said anything at the-
No.
SAU board.
Nothing, nothing came up in terms of, what about X?
That's why we reiterated it every time, it seems like, for everybody to read these things before we get to this point where-
Yeah, but if you look at number one.
Pete, are you concerned that there's some disciplinary action options missing?
I'm just saying, could there be other, other illegal actions or other things that could be done that don't form these categories, but really should be subject to some disciplinary actions?
Can you come up with one?
Not off the top of my head, I can't, that's a side, it seems-
A better way to ask that is, ask the guys who've been administering for a hundred years if they've come across the circumstance and that isn't covered here.
It, it seems broad enough, that was just the only thing that jumped out at me, is, you know, do we need any other wording to adjust to cover something that-
Again, if you look at the statement under number one on the policy, it really, it's like a broad brush of, in a scope of violations that cover a lot, if you look at that, so I think, that's where it started.
I mean, if you tell me this is enough, then I'm fine.
I think I would have, as a superintendent, I would, all, all that's there, but included number one, I think is the most, one of the more important things.
Well, I'd like to agree, but I, I see Peter's point, and one, in one sense. This could refer to any and all state laws or federal laws as well. In other words, you know, I mean, it, it, it's pretty, it's limited, but if you included state and local laws and whatever, you know what I'm saying?
In the, in number one, David?
Oh, I'm sorry, number, number four is grounds for dis, I mean, other, there are, I'm just trying to broaden what Peter is suggesting here.
Local drug and alcohol laws?
Yeah.
Well, it says the unlawful manufacture, distribution, dispensation, dispensation, possession, or use of illicit drugs and alcohol.
In number one, that's what I was gonna say, it may be covered just that way.
I think that's the umbrella statement, I think, so unlawful, federal, state.
Yeah, I agree.
Then I'm fine, yes.
Okay, Howard, yes, Mary Lou, yes, Pim?
Just yes.
You're gonna run out sooner or later.
I'm getting tired.
All right, so, AE accountability, any questions on that? Again, this is a second reading, so it's been to the SAU twice and to our board twice, or SAU once, sorry, and our board twice, this is the second time at our board. Any questions or comments? All right, seeing none, motion, Howard?
I'll make a motion to accept AE accountability policy.
Okay, second?
Steve.
Steve, seconds, okay, roll call, Dwayne?
Aye.
Steve?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Mary Lou, yes, Pim?
Yes.
Wow, you ran out of, ran out of ways to say yes.
Not creative.
I got more ways.
All right, policy BDE, committees and delegates, pretty short policy, again, been to the SAU and the second time at our board, anyone want to make a motion, or we can also have discussion or questions after a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept BDE, committee, committees and delegates, committee, uh, policy.
Okay, Pete, seconds, any question or discussion? Seeing none, Dwayne?
Aye.
Steve, Dave, did you have a comment?
Yeah, the only comment is, is a lot of, a lot of this is done by just acclamation, you know, I mean, so this is gonna require somebody to remember that we do this all the time. I mean, a lot of times we just say, okay, you want to be on this committee, yeah, go ahead, you're on this committee, your athletics, you know.
Well, this is for a new committee, standing and special committees and delegations, so it, it also includes new committees, like in other words, if we wanted to form a board committee to investigate STEM, I just pulled that out of my head.
Well, I don't really, I'm not objecting to any, the wording in particular, I'm just saying that, you know, this is imposing a, what do you call it, an obligation for somebody to remember to do this all the time when we make the distinction.
Well, we do this every year when we do-
Yeah, we do it all the time.
When we have our-
Well, there are other committees that happen all the time, though, Howard, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, but we do this, we, we assign committees every year when we do-
Yeah, no, I know that.
The new roster.
All right, I'm not gonna-
Okay.
I think the difference is, you're thinking of a formal vote, we all kind of just nod our heads when we have that.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Yep.
Yeah.
This is, this is an overhead of change, that's all, nevermind.
Yeah, you're, you're saying it's adding an additional step that we don't typically do, and I-
Yeah, in a lot of cases, we do it informally, and it's just done, you know, and-
I see, and I see what you're saying, but I think informal is okay, too.
It's still done in the context of a meeting, if it does agree, so.
Everyone consents as opposed to a formal vote sometimes, but I, I do see what you're saying, yeah.
You meet the intent, I guess I could say, but-
Yeah.
Some boards, some boards are more formal with those things.
And it is in the minutes, so it would be a formal vote.
So is that a yes, though, Dave?
Yeah.
Okay, Pete?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Mary Lou, yes, Pim?
Yes.
Okay, last one, JCA, change of school assignment, again, we've read it at the SAU board, and this is our second reading here. Any comments, questions?
This, this is a procedural thing, Peter, you know, does this happen often?
No.
And who pays, is there, is there, ultimately, if, if the superintendent Hollis comes over and says, Peter, you gotta take this kid, what, how does this work? I mean, how, financially, how does it work? What? You don't want me to ask this question?
We're really versed in this question.
Are you? Okay, well, I'm not, but-
Well, it kind of spells it out in the policy, actually, it's, I mean, I know Peter can answer, but it's an agreement.
And I'm chuckling, David, because we've had instances here where we've had to deal with this, and-
Not often, but-
If, and we changed this policy, actually, it was changed to put in, I think I mentioned it last time, at the SAU board, if you look at section number four, a second sentence, the board must vote to approve the reassignment before the reassignment can occur, prior to that, it was, in this particular instance, it would have been on, the superintendent could make the final decision. And in some cases, in some cases, the payment for that child to go from one public school to another public school, one public high school to another public high school rests with the sending district. In some cases, in some cases, it does not.
The superintendents can come to an agreement, the receiving superintendent can agree to pay, and that's spelled out in the policy here.
The receiving superintendent can pay?
Yeah.
Why would you, why would the receiving superintendent pay?
It says they can.
It doesn't say they will.
I thought the sending superintendent would have to pay.
No, it doesn't mean they would pay us, they would pay part of the tuition.
That's right.
So, why, why wouldn't, I mean-
They can waive it, it says whether-
Yeah, but a student is not, in this situation, I don't know any names or anything like that, but in this situation, most of the students that would be going, that you would send, would not, would be undesirable, or, you know-
No, let me give you, let me give you an example, a practical example, David, so-
Well, no, I'm just, you know what I'm saying?
No, no, yeah.
Lunedary, Lunedary Middle School, building, they were building a new wing in Lunedary, and in that particular building project, we had student, a student in Lunedary that was severely, severely allergic to latex, and they were using latex in the building while they were building the building.
Okay.
So that student had to be, the decision had to be made in the best interest of the student to go from Lunedary to somewhere else, ended up in, I think, Litchfield. And the board felt, we want, this is a resident of our town, we're gonna pay the student's freight to the other school, and the other school actually, you know, waived a good part of that tuition. This is out of the ordinary situations, but they do come up sometimes.
But, but, does, does an undesirable situation ever occur, an undesirable student ever occur that, that you don't really want, and then you have the right to say no, the board can say no?
I wouldn't do that, but, you know, there are instances where kids are going to other schools, but that's not typically the case, or the reason why this would be invoked.
It's not, okay.
No, not in my, no, I wouldn't do that.
And then we would have the right to not do it anyway, if-
That's right, yeah. I wouldn't want it to happen to us, right? You'd be involved in that anyway, but, so, a lot of, a lot of weird circumstances around this and a couple of other policies we have relating to schools.
But is it, is this a general reciprocity issue in the state? In other words, most schools, all, all school districts have a, ours is a policy, but our, all school districts have a-
All school districts have a JCA policy, that's why we're trying to standardize all the policies we have in our districts, because all the other districts through NHSBA have similar ones.
They also have a manifest hardship policy, GJEC, and it used to be that these two policies, one would allow the superintendent to do on his own without the board's approval, and one would have the board's approval. So now we, they've changed it at the state level, so now both of those policies take a, a board approval to change districts.
But, but every board has the same reciprocity in approval process, so this is a standardized process.
Yes, yeah.
They're required to have those two policies, and we've always had this policy, the only thing that's, that we're changing here is that one sentence about, a board can now, now must have the right to approve.
And that was changed this past summer, so-
Well, it couldn't just be just an RSA, and then everybody's got to apply-
Well, it is, the RSA is, is causing us to change the policy.
All right, well, what I say is, we don't even need the policy if it's an RSA.
No, the RSA is kind of more general in each district, I might call it policy.
All right, so, does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept JCA.
I had a, I had a question.
Okay, go ahead.
I, I did have a question on this one, well, that, we talk about, especially, I'm sorry, best interest of the child, best interest of the student, so forth. There's no provision in here, trained professionals that, this request, their recommendations of- I believe this is the-
.......................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................... ...[1612.83] So, any other questions or discussion? Okay, so, there's a motion and a second on the table, so we'll do roll call again. Dwayne?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
I'm losing track. My kids want-
That's Peter.
Marley, Olivia, Bran, Pete, Howard?
Yes.
Mary Lou, yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so, the first five will be brought back next month.
Thanks, everyone, and thanks to the policy committee.
Yes, thank you, guys, yeah.
Again, they're meeting twice a month, rather than just one, once a month.
Once a month.
Exactly.
So, we already covered the late start, and we do have a second public comment time. If there's anyone from the public wishing to make a statement? No? Okay. All right, so that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting. Just so you know, I'll go over this, but I can also email it to you when we go over it at our agenda-setting meeting. For future agenda items, I have the camera review from Incident Command Team, the, later on in the year, if it's not approved before then, maybe taking money out of the Capital Reserve Fund for bathroom repairs. For another agenda item, having a student night, including the inauguration, ethics, and whatever else we feel is appropriate. I have building maintenance fund, not sure why I wrote that down. Potentially going over the Bedford-Hanover evaluation model, or changing to that model sometime in the future, a board discussion on that. And field trip guidelines, which we already had for, like, April's agenda, I believe it is. Anything else? Steve?
Just a thought, that the student presentations, the March meeting is probably a great meeting for that.
I was thinking the same thing, because we're done with deliberative, we have no further budget, you know, so, yeah, let's try to do it for the March meeting, I would love that. All right, or we will try to do it for the March meeting. Anything else you guys can think of?
Just a date for the public forum.
Okay, are you going to-
I'm going to get that.
Email us on that? Okay, that-
Yeah, trying to think of what a good time would be, too, you know, to do that. And again, you're all invited to the, to the meeting with Dean Eggers, I think you'd find it really interesting.